Jesse, do we have our other members?
Not yet.
Okay.
Lawson's coming in now.
Good evening.
Hey.
Hi Lawson.
Good evening Mark. Hi Beth.
Hello.
Good evening. Beth, what side of the animal head behind you? Were there two?
Good Lord. Antelope. That's a... I'm not sure what kind it is. A lot of...
Animal's good enough for me, yeah.
Yeah, antelope.
Evening.
Who said that?
Dave Moyes.
Oh hi.
How are you Chairman?
Just fine. I think.
All I know is I was, I was a little dr- I had a little bit of that what they call dragon disease this morning. Dragon was dragon. Dragon disease.
You must explain.
Uh oh, dragon.
You're just dragging, yes.
Yeah, I call it dragon disease, yeah.
Okay, did we keep you up too late last night?
Oh no.
I did have a... We were still waiting for Brett.
He's here.
Okay, where is he? I'd like to get him up on the screen here. How do I do that?
Yeah, if you scroll over to see like page two, you can see the people who came in and then you can click and drag him back to page one. Place him up at the top.
You might just want to keep me in the background.
You said it, not me. And do we have Diane too? Is she on?
And more beatos on, but not Diana O'Connell.
Yeah, we want her.
Oh, there's Diane. Just, just joined us.
Excuse me.
Somebody has a cold.
No, just right through, oh thanks. Time for a bottle of water.
There she is. Hi Diane.
Good evening, how are you?
So fantastic, as you can guess. Okay, we all set gang?
Yeah, I think we're here.
Okay. I'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of October 27th to order at 6:32. Roll call, right with them. Here, Mike, yep. Lawson Wilson?
Here.
Beth Gott?
Here.
And myself, Mark Good, I'm here. And we have town manager slash CEO Jesse Dunbar. I imagine we have our recording secretary Jan Sprague, though I didn't quite see her yet. And, and our council Diane O'Connell. As well as members of the public and the applicant. Okay, excused absences. I guess we know Jeff's not going to be here tonight, so I'll take a motion to excuse his absence.
I'll make a motion to excuse Jeff Young.
To second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion is seconded at table to excuse Jeff Young. Call for a vote Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero, okay. Okay. Beth, it's time for you to accuse yourself, sorry.
Ah, it's okay.
I appreciate that yes vote, yes.
Yes, I recuse myself.
Okay. Well, at the advice of council, I'm saying this. Received an email from Amy Chow at 5:55 this evening. With a request for us to continue this meeting or suspend our deliberations tonight and wait until we can accommodate Jeff Young. And I will allow Amy a few minutes to explain it. Why she thinks that's appropriate.
I appreciate that, thank you Mr. Chair.
Keep it brief please.
I, I will do so. I, first I want to thank the board for the proceeding last night. I know that went long, it was a long evening. I think the board is working hard going through each standard and having a thorough discussion of each one. And I think a central part of that discussion has been Mr. Young and I heard a number of you board members agree that, you know, he has been an important part of this process and has seen it from start to finish along with all of you. And he has also requested the courtesy of being allowed to participate. And so my, my suggestion, and, and I also heard last night that Mr. Hamilton pledged to be reasonable. And I think his specific, one of his specific suggestions was wanting to make sure that the board could, could proceed, but do so before November 2nd. And I also heard Mr. Young say that although he couldn't know exactly what his vacation plans were, that if the board, you know, scheduled to a date certain, he would try to make sure he could be available by wifi, but he just wasn't certain about what his vacation plans were. So my suggestion is that, that, given that we know that Mr. Young is not available tonight and that the board, board members do wish to have his participation, I think it would be appropriate and fair to briefly stay the proceeding, not for a long period of time and not even for the period of time extending beyond the deadline that, that Mr. Hamilton has said is important to his clients. To determine whether Mr. Young is available because I think, as you have said, he has been an important part of these proceedings. And I think it would be fair to try to include him in, in the deliberations and, and in the fact finding process. So that's my request and I appreciate the board's consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, as far as I'm concerned, we decided this last night, for one thing. I thought we did try to accommodate Mr. Young and he was unable to provide us with a date and time, which makes it difficult to schedule a meeting, but I'm open to any discussion from Brett and Lawson.
Well. Do we even have the authority to, to do, don't we need, it's, it's, you know, the whole thing is so bizarre to me. The, you know, we talk a lot about, there's been a lot of talk about due process and I appreciate that, you know, Jeff has been a part of it. You know, we've known for a long time that this, these dates were coming, I mean, I could tell this was, we were sort of heading towards this date three months ago. So everyone knew that, you know, this is, could potentially be a busy week, so I'll just throw that out there.
It was, we received no notice, oh go, go ahead, I'm sorry Brett.
I, I don't think that the board can just agree, I think we need the applicant to agree with us and I completely understand why they wouldn't. You know, one thing about, I just, my, I'm just going to lay it out here and be honest with you, I also, I just get the sense sometimes that there are certain aspects of this that are intentionally being dragged out. And that is a tactic and a strategy. And I, I completely understand why everyone waits to get heard and we don't want to rush through things, but I also feel like, you know, as part of the process, the applicant has a right to get the decision that they, that they seek, whatever that is, in accordance with the timeframe and the rules that are set forth, and if we have a quorum to do that, that's what we should do.
Certainly, you know, Jeff didn't make his reservations yesterday afternoon. He could have given us a little notice ahead of time that this might be happening.
I mean, I'm not going to go into what I really think there, but yeah.
Yeah, and, and and Ms. Chow, as in your part, you know, I frankly, I don't appreciate getting an email from you at half an hour before the meeting starts with this issue. You could, you could have emailed us this morning. Lawson, any thoughts?
Um, I, I mean, my only thoughts is like, I don't love the situation, like, like, I don't feel like there's, it's, it doesn't feel great, but I don't think that thing, anything's really changed since last night when we made what was a hard decision. But I feel like it was the right decision and, which is to convene tonight and to continue moving through the findings of fact. And I don't think that anything's changed since then for me.
I agree, we made the decision last night. And we had reasons for that decision. I think we should proceed. You think we, Jesse, do you think we need a motion on that? I don't think so, we made it last night.
Right, we're continuing as we had already decided to continue.
Yep. Okay, sorry Ms. Chow. Okay. Continuation of the findings of fact on the application for a Katy Wilderness Lodge. And Diane O'Connell has some suggestions on how we can better, or, or how we can better proceed with our fact finding here and making the motions. And I'm going to give her a minute to explain that to the other members as well.
Yeah, good evening to you all. When you go into your deliberations, my suggestion is instead of going straight to a motion, that you review the full standard out of the ordinance and go through it and discuss it in the context of the evidence that you have before you and make some specific, have some discussions about what, if there's anything needed to support or not support that standard and make some specific findings before you go into the motion part of deliberation. It's just important to remember that whatever conclusions you make, whether or not a certain standard's been met or not met, it needs to be supported by something in the record that's been presented in evidence.
So basically...
Thank you, yeah.
Basically, you want us to look at the standards in the ordinance itself. And review those. And then look into the, at the application. And compare it with the standards in the ordinance. And then discuss it if we need to and then make a motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We ready gang?
Yeah.
I think we're on D, on the site plan review ordinance findings of fact. That's access, way, location and spacing. So this is a little new.
So this one seems somewhat straightforward and that it's, you know, the, the standard requires it to be 150 feet from a signalized intersection. And this is 550 feet from that intersection.
Yeah, private entrances, exits must be located at least 50 feet from the closest unsignalized intersection. And 150 feet from the closest signalized intersection. This measure from the point of tangency from the corner to the point of tangency for the accessway. This requirement may be reduced if the shape of the site does not allow conformance with this standard. And private accessways in or out of a divot must be separated by a minimum of 75 feet where possible, which is not applicable in this case. And according to Jesse's calculations, we find that on page 58 of Greg's well, it's called a tome. He says the entrance is located greater than 50 feet and 100 feet away, 100 feet from any intersection, there's only one entrance planned for the project and it is 550 feet from an intersection. I think we noted that on the map, right?
Yep. Do we need to, do we need to cite that map or can we just say that we know that the distance is 550, 550 feet?
Diane?
Yeah, so you can make a finding effect and it's 550 feet.
We don't need to cite the map itself.
No, you can just cite the record.
Great, great.
Lawson?
All right, then I'll go ahead and make a motion that condition 9D accessway location and spacing. That the requirements are met. Because the, there's one entrance which is planned and is 550 feet from the closest intersection which is greater than 150, which is a requirement.
Brett, you want to second it?
Yeah, I'll second that.
What's that, yes? Like, I'm going to hear him, yeah. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table to find that the accessway location, the spacing condition has been met for the stated reason. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that condition's been met, next we go to internal vehicular circulation. So that condition's been met. Next, we go to internal vehicular circulation. That's E in the ordinance, the site plan review ordinance.
So do we want to address this sort of the way we did paragraph C, where we take them one subsection at a time?
I think, as Mr. Hamilton suggested, and we can do it all in one motion. Do you agree, Diane?
Yeah, I think you should, before you make the motion, you can go through each one and talk about, and talk about them.
Yeah.
And then make one motion.
Okay.
And does that, does the motion, Diane, then have four different findings of fact, four facts that we have to find?
Um, that would be my suggestion, yes.
Okay.
Something to support each one, something to support each requirement, if it's applicable, or a finding that it's not applicable.
Okay, I'll read it. The layout of the site must provide for the safe movement of passenger service and emergency vehicles through the site. Non-residential projects that will be served by delivery vehicles must provide a clear route for such vehicles with appropriate geometric design to allow turning and backing for a minimum of two vehicles. Clear routes of access must be provided and maintained for emergency vehicles to and around buildings, and must be posted with appropriate signage, such as fire lane, no parking. The layout and design of parking areas must provide for safe and convenient circulation of vehicles throughout the lot. And D, all roadways must be designed to harmonize with the topographic and natural features of the site insofar as practical by minimizing filling, grading, excavation, or other similar activities which result in unstable soil conditions and soil erosion by fitting the development of the natural contour of the land and avoiding substantial areas of excessive grade and tree removal, and by retaining existing vegetation during construction. The road network must provide for vehicular, pedestrian, and cyclist safety, all-season emergency access, no storage and delivery and collection services. And we find that on page 59.
Mark, since we're just getting our rhythm for tonight, is it really necessary for you to read through? I mean, are you doing that for our benefit, or for the public's benefit, or for somebody else's benefit?
I thought that's what Diane was suggesting.
Well, I think she wants us to talk about it, and to make sure that, like, we, the three of us are on the same page, or not, whatever. But I'm not sure we need to read through it in order to do that.
I think you're correct, Lawson. I think just addressing each one, you know, talking about each one.
Okay.
And so, I mean, since we, I don't know, I assume Brett, you've got your ordinance in front of you?
I do.
Yeah, so we could just, like, look at EA and then try to figure out where the fact is that's relevant. I'm looking, that's what is F, which is like a page and a half long of paragraphs, so just trying to figure out the cadence.
So certainly for, you know, clear routes of access for emergency vehicles on the, the narrative on page 59 does address access for emergency vehicles.
Yep, and it's also shown on the site plan in terms of the one-way and the two-way streets.
Yep. And the reason for having some one-way where it made sense was to minimize clearing, which I think speaks to subsection D.
I agree, yep. The parking layouts, which are shown of the grading plan, I mean, multiple places, but also seem to conform to, like, paragraph B, or section B. I'm sorry, C.
Yeah, I agree.
How about the delivery vehicles? Does it say anything here? In fact, this says camper traffic, which we no longer consider.
Well, I mean, unless it's just like traffic of people who are camping.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah.
That kind of traffic.
I think campers are these, yeah, exactly.
Right, yeah. Guest, guest traffic.
Greg?
Yep, Mr. Chair, I'm trying not to jump in unless you address a question, sensing that the spaces behind the farm, you can note, as I'm glad member Wilson did, that the site plan, in addition to the written record, is a good reference. The clear distance between those parking spaces is like 25 feet. You can see a pad at the end of it, that's not where refuse can be picked up, but also how a delivery vehicle often would pull in, temporarily sit in that 25-foot lane and be able to pull back out.
Yeah, I see that. There's basically a big parking lot behind the farmhouse.
And that rectangular pad is for refuse, but they would be able to pull it back into that parking lot, was the intent.
But certainly, that's not the only place that you'll have delivery vehicles, correct?
Well, you also noticed throughout, there's a number of loops on the plan, both in the cul-de-sacs and the other areas, so.
I mean, my space.
I was just gonna say, the maintenance area is another place that's kind of remote, but we tried to make as many loops so that we would avoid backing around principally delivery areas, as we wanted, you know, big vehicles to be up front, we kept towards the cafe.
What do you think? Looks good to me.
Yeah, looks good to me.
Yeah, me too. Let me give this a shot. I mean, I'll make a motion that the applicant has met the standard in Article 9, subsection E, in that the plan provides for the safe operation and turning and backing of delivery vehicles, clear routes of access for emergency vehicles, but safe, convenient circulation of vehicles throughout the project, through the design of parking areas and roadways, and they're generally harmonized to minimize, minimize, you know, excessive, you know, grading and tree removal and things like that.
I'll second that. Good job, Brett, that was a tricky one.
Thanks, Brett. We have a motion, a second on the table, to find that the internal vehicular circulation condition has been met for stated reason. Any discuss, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 3-0. Diane, is this basically what you wanted, what we're doing here?
Um, yes, you did a great job.
Thanks. They are, anyway. Next, F, layout and design?
Mark, we're losing you. I think when you, like, lean forward or something.
Away from the mic again, sorry.
Yeah.
Checking layout and design. And that's, uh, cab 3.
And so,
60, page 60.
Yeah. And so if we look through these paragraphs, paragraph 1, there's no parking on the street, so nobody's backing up in the street. The parking spaces are more than five feet from the side or rear lot lines. Parking stalls are at least nine and a half by 18. Yep, that's true.
For Greg, I noticed that one of the lots, I think, yeah, by the playground, has diagonal parking. And the ordinance requires that if you use diagonal parking, the direction of the proper traffic flow must be indicated by signs, pavement markings, and other permanent indications to maintain this necessary.
Greg, you're muted.
Hey, Mark, I would say those areas, other than if they're not paved, which we ended in paving up front, we indicated by either some cobble or stone that would indicate where they should park.
You're saying that's not a paved lot?
No, we indicated that we're gonna end caving up towards the front of the project, you guys remember that discussion?
Yeah, so, yes, okay, yeah.
Greg, is the main loop one-way?
That is correct, yeah.
And which direction does it flow?
Uh, here. Stay left as you're coming in.
Is there a, like, clockwise?
Yep.
Okay.
There's a, you see the notice that says end caving, and clockwise, yes.
Yeah.
Greg, I don't think you really fully answered my question. You marked about the diagonal parking. Are you going to have signs there?
Signs of the diagonal parking?
If you, the ordinance requires if you have diagonal parking spaces, which you do by the playground, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that, it does, you have to have signs to direct proper traffic flow, and they must be maintained.
Or, or other permanent.
Yeah, yeah.
Indication, I was suggesting the signs in the ground of a different material with the striping, whether it be stone or dust or marking, that is a sign of how you would be parking. I don't think you need to get into a diagonal parking lot and say, please, diagonal park.
No, an arrow or something saying entrance exit, sign saying that.
Sure, understandably. I thought you were asking about the marking, marking, I was confused.
Yeah, I think any reasonable condition will be acceptable to the applicant that follows what the chair is asking about, which is, we'll either provide signage or permanent indication as to direction of proper traffic flow. With diagonal parking, you're not gonna be backing out into the traffic flow. So that's why that's important. So what we'd accept a condition on that particular item.
Okay. Go on, Lawson.
All right, paragraph 5. There's no double stack parking, so I don't know if this, or I guess it is applicable because there's no doubles, or it's met because there's no double stack parking. Paragraph 6, there's no overhanging of parking vehicles that are, there's been a strict traffic flow. Paragraph 7A. No garage.
Well, it just says at least a minimum number of off-street parking spaces.
Right, so.
Each structure.
Oh, I see. So paragraph 7 is all about the quantity of parking.
Right.
And and I see, so that goes all the way through page 20, on page 22. And I'm not gonna go through each of those, except just to say that the parking, their required parking is 108, and they provided 112 spots, so they meet, they've exceeded the amount of required parking. And I'm looking at the table submitted on page 60.
Right, right.
The evidence for that.
9.5, we eat wide, 18 feet long.
So I think that takes care of the parking layout and design. Did I miss something there? It was like paragraph 4.
We just need to make sure that there are enough parking spaces according for each unit, according to the ordinance. The cafes, for instance, have five parking spaces, according to Greg, or according to his design, and restaurants, eating and drinking establishments, one parking space for every four seats, plus one for every two employees. I don't see one for every two employees. I see one per four seats.
I believe the employees are at the top of the chart, Mark, but I could be mistaken.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, campground, one per two employees, okay. This doesn't strictly refer to the cafe, but, okay. So the people that work at the cafe will park down in the employee parking lot, and have to get up to the cafe, I take it?
Well, there's 12, there's 12 spaces at the cafe.
Oh, okay. You only have five on your chart here, that's what confused me.
Well, it was dedicated to the cafe, but there, you're dedicating to the employees too. Cafe to the seats, and so the area there, we aggregated the site, you also understand that the the bunkhouses for the staff are at the other end of the site, just parking down there as well. But if the cafe requires five, there's 12, five for the seats, a couple employees, people coming and going to check in.
Certainly, you'll have employees that don't live on site, correct?
I believe so. We've accounted for those parking spaces. I think the total, well, first of all, by the ordinance, campground only required one, but we went to the more restrictive of per sleeping room, which is above and beyond, and we also have four extra on site per, more conservative of what your ordinance requires.
Board members?
So as a concern,
So it's a concern, Mark, that the for employee parking or cafe parking.
Who's that, Brett?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's what I was wondering. Uh, the ordinance says. Uh, where am I here? Okay, one parking space every fourteen plus one for every two employees.
I mean, it gets a little bit into uh, like, how many, like, does the cafe have employees that are separate from the campground that has employees? Or are we just counting employees once? In which case we have eight employees, so four parking spaces for the employees of the campground.
That was my question, yeah.
That is how we have calculated is eight employees total for the site.
Um, and that you know, the application is for a campground that has various things going on, but it's not for a restaurant. I we're not counting counting parking spaces for the whole project, which totals one hundred and eight required. That's the way I see it.
And you could you could say that the the ordinance also says one per um you know, site as well. And we defaulted to sleeping rooms. Right, the year that we're where there were two beds, which is a site, we counted for an extra spot. So I mean, there's plenty of parking. Um, we get a cop for eight employees total. That's the question.
Brett, are you still looking at it?
Yeah, I am. I mean, I think I'm satisfied. I mean, I'm I'm taking the this chart here at face value. But Mark, which I mean, which I'm looking at F seven and then it's got like sub A through it goes on for a while. Which sub part are you in?
Uh, I'm looking at, let's see, F um, seven. K. So on page twenty-one.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, for the cafe, but then it's, yeah, I mean, but then I think what 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 Greg is saying is that the there's eight employees total. One for every two employees. So they would meet, they would meet that. Like, if you in that line, it's right below campground where it says one per two employees.
Right, yeah. I mean, I guess another way to ask it, Mark, is like, how many employees does the cafe have? And are those employees employee parking spaces provided? And I think that the application has indicated that the cafe has some portion of eight, some percentage of the eight employees are gonna work at the cafe. What even if it's all eight employees only work at the cafe, they still have enough parking. And if only one of the eight employees works there, there's still enough parking for the employees of the cafe.
Okay. I was just concerned that there might be employees working that don't live on site and must be accommodated with parking spaces.
Yes, Mark, uh, the only way I would address that is that there are some of the employees would not be parking at the cafe potentially. Um, we've committed to eight employees and we actually have defaulted to twice per campsite, where most of them are the standard is one. And even above that, we've provided four more spots than the ordinance requires in its entirety. So I think in its entirety, uh, we'd use a more conservative calculation. Um. And I guess it's all.
Good. I guess I'm okay with that. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, and.
Please.
So we want to put a condition on paragraph four or subsection four? Do we do that as part of this just one motion?
Jesse's nodding yes.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and attempt that. Um. So I make a motion that uh that we find condition or yeah, condition F parking lot, parking layout and design to be met because uh or to be conditionally met um because the uh parking areas are arranged uh or the parking is onsite and what does not, will not require anybody to back out into the street because all the parking spaces, access drives, and impervious surfaces are located uh at least five feet from side or rear lot lines. And because the parking stalls and aisle layout conform to nine and a half by eighteen feet um, long. Um. We as a playing board would like to place the condition on this um on this requirement that um the applicant permanently mark the diagonal parking signs and indicate the direction of proper traffic flow um for the diagonal parking lot. The parking areas um oh, uh, do not include any double stacking parking. The provision uh there are no, there will be no overhanging of parked vehicles because of the location of the parking lots. And the total number of parking spaces exceeds the required spaces um per subsection seven.
I will second that.
Great job. So you get paid the big bucks, right? Okay, I have a motion in a second on the table to find the parking layout and design condition has been met with its own condition. For the state of reason uh any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero. Okay. Pedestrian circulation.
There, uh, let up like you to point you towards page two thirty-six as well as the description on page sixty-one.
Yeah, yep. So there are no existing sidewalks that this connects to. So it's only a self-contained pedestrian circulation. Lots of the, lots of the uh the ordinance refers to sort of connections to other systems, but um only that's applicable here. And so it seems like I would just speak to the first sentence, which is that it um provides a system for pedestrian within the development that's appropriate to the type and the scale of the development.
Yeah, I think this one's pretty straightforward.
I agree. Was that was that was page two thirty-six, Greg?
Yeah, that's the pedestrian circulation and waiting plan.
Yeah.
Um, it does connect the major buildings entrances with parking areas. That's also important or, you know, relevant.
We finally found it, yeah. Looks good to me. What do you guys think? You all said?
I agree.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that uh that we find the um, the condition G pedestrian circulation to be met because the uh the project provides pedestrian circulation that are uh appropriate to the type and scale of development and connects building entrances with parking areas.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in a second on the table to find the pedestrian circulation condition met for the state of reason. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero again. Stormwater management, that's H.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, a convenience for Diane Morobito, who's our traffic engineer. Uh, because Greg's gonna be handling stormwater. She wanted to be able to uh exit once traffic was covered and with parking, I think we've gotten there. So is that okay? The chair?
Uh, was there anything to Luo that involving traffic? I don't know why she'd want to leave.
I mean, there is roads, driveways, and driveway openings under.
AI. Um.
Yep.
There's also a Luo article six H two C, but um I think these relates mostly to internal circulation and um so Diane, if you want to hang on for just a few more minutes, we'll probably get there. But if you need to exit, we'll understand.
You know, that Greg can handle this.
I think the chair is right. Greg's on it. Uh, your excuse, Diane.
You can thank me later, Diane.
I've got her number.
Stormwater management, okay, H.
All right, so this is, this is a big one, but we'll just go one section at a time. The plan retains stormwater on the site using natural features of the site to the extent possible. Um, I think there is a built retaining basin. Greg, can you just speak to that for a second? You know it better than we do.
So you find, you you can hear me on this on the site, both vegetated um infiltration areas, um rain gardens, if you will. Near the fitness center and H, um, you've got a wet pond, um, also goes as a fire pond up in the easterly uh southeastly section. Also, throughout everywhere we release, we use a level spreader to promote infiltration. Um, and those are appropriately sized. Um, so I'll pause it and make sure I'm addressing the specific question. Um. Just a lot of like it going on.
No, I, I, that's that's helpful. We're, I was just wanting to sort of hear about retaining the stormwater on site um using natural features to the extent possible. Um, I think that you addressed that. Uh, the next paragraph, uh, section two, um stormwater runoff systems must detain or retain water such as the rate of flow from the site after development does not exceed the pre-development rate. And I appreciate that that's true. It was in the so in the stormwater report, um they just put the page sixty-nine, that's useful. Where the pre and post development flows are mapped and indicate that the post runoff is lower than the pre runoff, peak runoff. Does that make sense? I'm just gonna keep going. Brett and Mark, jump in or interrupt if you want to talk about something.
I just want to say some of these things are supported in the Haley Ward peer review we had done too.
That's great, yep.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, and I just found it. So, yeah, absolutely.
Um, paragraph three, the applicant must demonstrate on and off-site downstream channel.
If it's the final page, um seventy-seven and sixty-nine, between there, we talked directly about the ditch on the state highway, but also there's the calculations. Um. Um, I believe on page sixty-nine, which showed that they've been sized appropriately for the culvert crossing um in particular.
I see that, yeah. The downstream conveyance structures. For our fours, all natural drainage ways must be preserved and their natural gradients must not be filled or converted. Um. Greg, are there natural drainage ways existing? That are preserved.
You can consider the whole site as one natural drainage way through that drains east to west. Um, if we're being more specific, uh, the rail, if you will, that's behind the cafe. That's a natural drainage way. Um, we show the culvert is uh crossing there, um, but no extension beyond the road for unnecessary fill. I think with that uh intention of that, that standard speaks. And we provide the calculations on that on that CA one culvert in the plan. Um, so all those natural drainage ways you speak of are maintained in the culverts that let them flow through are contained on that table on page sixty-nine.
And the design and stormwater system uh provides for disposal of stormwater without damage to streets or adjacent properties or downstream properties, soil and vegetation vegetation. And that the the spreaders, the level spreaders are part of that along with other mitigation strategies.
And they've been sized in the in the buffers below basically to reduce velocity and spread them out. Um, they've been sized using a standard not in ordinance, but um that is their intent. Um, but also um the specifications speak to the last part of that too. On page one forty, there's a number of re-vigitation specifications for uh the erosion control, which dovetail um with this section. Um, and then I also would just comment about the, um, you know, large amount of buffers that are remaining towards the west. And that we've checked any sort of, um, in all conditions, we've tried to keep sheet flow, um, and only crossing uh enclosed systems and dispersing where necessary for detention. in all conditions, we try to keep sheet flow and only crossing enclosed systems and dispersing where necessary for detention. And crossing the road.
And Greg, how have you incorporated upstream runoff which must pass over or through the site?
So if you guys want to, let me get to it. I believe it's page seventy seven again. Seventy seven should be an offsite map. Shows the watershed areas. Yeah. So what you'll see on page seventy seven. Is the watershed areas extending offsite that were used in consideration of flows to the site. You'll see that on seventy six and seventy seven.
Yep.
And then at the bottom of page. Low stuff there. That that addresses the
Your chair.
Yep.
We're having a hard time. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're having a hard. Several of us are having a hard time hearing when Greg looks down. It's very soft for some of us. Do we think you could speak into the mic?
Better microphone technique, Greg, please.
Thank you.
Thanks. Got papers spread everywhere. So.
Yeah, no, I understand. I've been chastised by Lawson several times for the same thing. And I actually worked in radio, so. I should know better.
So the last section here is about the biological chemical properties of downstream receiving waters must not be degraded.
Well, you'll what you'll find is the areas of infiltration, rain gardens, we propose in the appropriate place to have a mixture of bark mulch in the bottom to move particulates. And as that standard also requests is vegetated buffers strips along and downstream of drainage swales. There are no deicing salts aren't open in winter. So I think there's a number of aspects of the storm management speak to this. The there are no grease traps and manholes, but there are some to allow grit settling as a pass through as a wet pond can let particulates settle as well.
Hold on Greg. Okay, I got no grease traps, but then what'd you say?
I did say that the catch basins would have some to remove grit as.
Thank you. Alright, I think I have got my head wrapped around it. Any other thoughts or questions, comments?
No, I don't think so. No, I mean, for me, this was addressed in the back and forth between the peer review and the responses by Greg to the to the payload ward peer review. That's kind of what I'm relying on.
Yeah, I mean, like the information submitted by the applicant and then the Haley rewards were confirmed that it.
Well, Hayden Ward actually had some questions about it and yeah, and then Greg, the applicant responded to them.
Is there anything in that that we should cite or?
I think the Haley Ward report.
Yeah.
Are you talking about?
Yeah.
Jesse would prefer it.
Well, I would I would just say the record and including the Haley Ward report, the applicant's response. Because it does explain.
It would cover, I'm sure.
Alright, I'll make a motion that the stormwater management condition H has been met. Through the submission, the applicant's submission, the peer review and subsequent responses from the applicant. Specifically. The the design retained stormwater onsite using the natural features of the site. That the the post development discharge rate is does not exceed the predevelopment discharge rate. The on and offsite downstream channel systems have sufficient capacity to carry the flow. Without the flooding or erosion. That the existing natural drainage ways are preserved. And the natural gradients are not filled or converted to closed systems. That the the stormwater drainage system disposes of stormwater without damage to streets or adjacent properties or downstream properties. That the the design incorporated upstream runoff in its calculations. And that the biological and chemical properties of the waters are addressed through the use of sumps and catch basins, vegetated buffer strips and drainage swales.
I'll second.
Okay. Great job again Lawson. A motion and a second on the table to find that the stormwater management condition has been met for the stated reasons. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero. Erosion control. That's I. The shorter one.
It's definitely the the design tries to minimize grading. There's a little bit of grading. That's being done around the road, but I know it definitely tries to attempt to preserve the existing topography and minimize tree cutting as part of the plan.
How about the parking lots and slope sites? Are any major slopes there?
There's one that's six point one percent, which is a slow parking lot. But the way I read the the ordinance saying that parking lots on slope sites must be terraced to avoid undue cut and fill. Well, given the design, I guess I'm looking at the ones that are up near the yurts. Where they are.
Speaking to the microphone.
I'm sorry. Yeah, busted. The one that pretty much near the yurts are separated. So there there's sort of multiple small parking lots as opposed to one huge parking lot. That seems to address that ordinance requirement.
So you're you don't think they need to be terrorists then? That one lot.
Not not more than they already are. Like, I wouldn't break it up into even smaller parking lots. I think that it looks like there's one parking lot with, I don't know, eight spots and another one sixteen. I mean, that seems about right. I don't think the ordinance is explicit about exactly to what degree it needs to be terrorist.
Right, right.
Maybe just make a comment, remember Wilson, that those two parking areas are separated because they are terrorists.
Yeah.
They are terrorist.
One's eight feet higher than the other one.
Rather than a large amount of fill for one big parking area.
And which lots are those?
They're the ones near the yurts. So I'm looking at the stormwater management grading plan.
Okay. The big map.
The big one, the big map.
You're talking about what smart here is one ten and one eighteen?
Exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that satisfies the requirement of the ordinance. What do you guys think?
I agree. And then but and then there's another paragraph that talks about a active program that meets requirements, the main erosion and sediment control handbook. And on page one forty two, they've submitted a soil erosion sedimentation specifications. Which says that they will be used in conjunction with the stormwater management and erosion control plan for the site. Let's see if we address that that part of the condition.
All I know is I need a bigger desk.
I'm maxing out my six foot long desk.
She's one forty two.
You know, there's also, and you may have mentioned it. Lawson, but there's also an ongoing maintenance and checklist. You know, inspection checklist.
On one forty eight.
Yeah, one four year. Fifty.
Yep.
I mean, based on, you know, you look at one forty, it lays out. And you know, word format, what they're doing and it matches the plan. I think they've probably met them. It's an interesting requirement, right? I mean, it's to the fullest extent. Full extent possible. And the whole, the whole, you know, point of a you know, wilderness campground is to kind of make it feel like, you know, give you the sense that you're still you're in the wilderness and that. So it seems like the
You're saying you don't think you're you're quite out in the wilderness, Brett?
Well, if you're if you, you know, the I think that now I think they've met the I think they've met the requirements. I think I think based on what I'm seeing in the record, one between one forty and one fifty. In addition to sheet C two thirty nine. Evidence is a you know, a good and reasonable plan for soil erosion and sediment control. Sedimentation barriers. That's that's what I'm seeing. It's interesting, this handbook that's cited though, eh?
In the ordinance.
Yeah.
Dated March nineteen ninety one. It's a thirty year old handbook.
Greg, did you did you consult that handbook?
The are you are you saying that the handbook's as old as dirt? No, I didn't. But believe me, I was around when it was written and long before there.
Greg, are you familiar with the handbook for construction?
I am, and we've actually referenced it's probably descended in page one forty.
Yeah, I did see some reference to it. But I didn't check the year.
Well, it's Greg used the October twenty sixteen version, which yeah, one could argue is more applicable than the nineteen ninety one version, but we're going to address that when we look at our ordinance details later, but.
Yeah, and that's where they I think that's where the this inspection checklist I noticed earlier. That's where that's coming from. So I will make a motion that standard article nine. I erosion control. Has been met. As evidenced in the scribe and record in pages one forty through one fifty and including sheet C two thirty nine. In that you know, all designs and layouts for roadways and buildings are harmonized to the to the fullest extent possible to natural surroundings. And they've kept filling an excavation or earth activity to a minimum. And also they've actually minimized soil erosion via an updated version of the main erosion and sediment control handbook for construction best practices.
Second.
Okay, motion and second on the table to find the erosion control condition has been met for stated reasons. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero. Water supply. It's J.
And
provides each use with an adequate supply of water. It's not served by a public water supply, so that's not applicable. Greg, I have a question. Somebody from the public, maybe more than one person commented that there was no storage of the water. And that they were concerned that, oh, people are not going to have an adequate supply of water. Can you address that, please?
Yes, I could. Mr. Chairman. We did indicate first, I will say that stormwater is problematic in how you'd want to do it above the ground. Water is best stored in its natural environment because it's in the ground. We're going to state that as our application shows us four wells. Generally, the wells are on four hundred feet deep. Four hundred foot deep wells. If they're six inch ceramic case, hold twenty three hundred gallons of water stored. That's not even touching their yield. That's just what they're holding. When you remove some, that's when you get to the yield. So the 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 storage that we're considering is in the in the well column, remains the ground cold and a good environment. Modern practice Modern practice is not to store water, we use what would be variable speed, but constant pressure pumps. Those pumps are in the, in the wells themselves. There's a transducer in the first unit they pass through. It senses whether or not the system has enough pressure in it and either ramps up or ramps down the pump in the well. So the storage that we're planning to use on site uses the best available technology to minimize storage because the way the the pump configuration is twenty-three hundred gallons of storage would require before you'd even touch the yield, it equates to fifty-five showers going for more than twenty minutes every morning. So that's just on the storage for the yield kicks in. So hopefully that answers your question. The storage we've indicated is the well column itself, which is commonly done and we'd be using a variable speed and constant pressure pumps.
Right. But of course, you don't know how deep the wells are going to be right now until you drill them.
Well, often, you know, as you drill wells, you you plan for what you're doing based on your yields, but if you want storage, you 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 can drill further. And being not right on the coast, where you might run into a problem with saltwater, drilling for storage in the ground here is is pretty is is pretty common.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
And Attorney O'Connell, I don't know if this is a question for for which one of you, but just a a procedural point. This isn't an area which one of our experts did have an opinion about. And I know the report is in the record, but since Mister Johnson has been able, been allowed to address that. And we do have Matt Reynolds here from Drummond Environmental. Would it be okay if he could address this issue briefly with the board?
The public hearings closed, Mister Chairman.
This is not new evidence. This is just, you know, there's an explanation provided by Mister Johnson that it's adequate. And there's been a report by our expert as to concerns about that issue. And I think, I think it's appropriate. Or will allow it to, to hear from Mister Reynolds. That would be my request.
I will say, you know, my view on this, and I know this is very important, people, and I I get it, but it maybe I'm simplifying this too much, but it seems to me that ultimately, isn't this one of the those items that's conditioned on state approval? This is really not. Isn't the state gonna come in and require the testing and adequate water supply and well, I mean, isn't that what what's gonna happen here?
I don't know. I think, I think the chairman's question, though, was specific to storage. Brett, just to make sure of focus, I was also saying that will have to happen as a testing program as well as an approval of state of the wells physically when they're drilled. So your statements are both correct. And I was just indicating that the storage question was what was pointed to me.
I apologize if if you've answered my question, but I have not heard an
I was great. I was gonna ask our counsel for an opinion on allowing you, your expert to speak or not.
Um, so I mean, it's up to the board if they want. If they have questions and clarifications, you know, they they can ask either experts. You're not really limited to one. Really up to you if you feel like you need further clarification on it.
Just, just because of the length of time, I'm just gonna object for purposes of the record. This is highly irregular to have opponents, experts testify twice in a proceeding. Every time we get to an issue, there's gonna be an expert that's gonna show up saying, I've got something to say again. It's in the record. The board can look to the record. We're gonna hyperextend these proceedings if we keep interrupting with testimony and argument.
Board members, any thoughts on that?
Just preface it by saying it's if if you're not, you're not asking for more testimony, but if you have a technical question on anyone's prior testimony, you're more than, you know, you can ask clarification of anything that's gone on before.
Lawson? I see you thinking there.
I think it's really up to you. I mean, if you you ask the question, Jeff, if you if you think you need to hear, if you think you need further comment on that question from the, yeah.
I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I think Diane's point makes sense that like, we can ask questions. Oh, anybody we want to add, well, I don't, the the experts who are in the room, and especially the ones who have submitted testimony that if we want clarifications on that, we can ask for that. I think that's different than than providing an opportunity for somebody to speak.
And and we did hear from him during the public comments.
Yeah, that was the basis of your question. That was the very basis of your question, Greg, was that testimony we heard from.
Yes, yes, that's true, yes. Okay. Sorry, Ms. Chow. We're gonna move along. Did we have a motion on that? No, we're just gonna discuss.
No, we're still talking.
Yep.
Yeah, I I had, I had something that grabbed my attention a little bit, Greg, was there was testimony about the and maybe this is what the state will address, but the, what is it called? The fill rates of the replenishment rates? And I think I heard the number was eight gallons a minute. But that you know, that, and I'm, I'm not using the right numbers here, but over twenty wells. The 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 mean was used, it was eight gallons a minute. But by and large, you know, eighteen of those wells were way below that. And then there were a couple are way above that. And so it brought, I mean, can you, can you explain that at all? Or what? You know, is the state gonna look at that and 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 look at those flow rates to ensure that that water table is adequate to support, you know, the needs and on impact neighbors? And that's a valid concern.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I I think what you're talking about are recharge rates, correct?
Yeah, what you have recharge rate. I think I called refill. I don't know.
Yeah, recharge rates. Yeah, and Haley Ward reported a little on that, too, and I did have some questions. Brett had a question there, Jeff, Greg, so.
Yep. So you wanna go ahead? If you guys can hear me okay, I'm gonna draw you to the response from Haley Ward in ten eighteen to one. Where the, the the pumping test stressed it for extrapolate for twenty gallons a minute without impact. And and the jail just concluded at the bottom page that each well on site, each of the four well would only need to yield one point nine gallons per minute. And that's on the last part of what was viewed by Haley Ward. So the idea that the average of eight gallons a minute was relied on as part of the I guess, conclusion. I think it's it's a little bit misleading. If you turn to the Haley Ward response in ten eighteen to one, you'll see a, they requested some similar information. And the, that each well would only need to pump one point nine gallons per minute, probably ten hours intermittently throughout the day, not even continuously to meet, meet the demands.
Greg, where are you, where are you seeing that on in the Hillary Ward response? I'm just
Let's see, the eighteenth probably the last page, last two pages of their eighteenth memo, attachment A.
I'm got attachment A.
Second last page. Last paragraph.
Got it. Thank you.
And so the idea of averages and and that and and not relying on that eight gallons a minute average, the applicants have tested a well, monitored another one. Extracted recoveries and then use not only recharge on the site, but then using the maximum, I'm gonna say this two again, the maximum leach field to ever draw or need plus some irrigation, and they only need about one point nine gallon per minute, per minute intermittently throughout the day, not not the average. So hopefully that clears it up. And I think the Haley Ward statement of agreement in that October eighteenth letter should independently support that.
Well, go ahead, Brett.
Well, I was just gonna ask again, though, I I just, I just don't know. I what does, and I'm just asking if you know, Greg, the state, what is the state test? What does that do? What does the state do? Are they, are they looking?
So I'm gonna, yeah, I do wanna, Brett, I hear what you're saying. Under groundwater supply where we are adequate water supply. I just pointed that that center was the supply. I think what we're going to with the state is we apply to first drill a well, a well, it's gonna serve more than twenty-five people. You apply, you show them the conditions you're gonna drill them in, you have to, well, it's too, before you drill the well, you seek permission. Then you have to build a well, and then you have a monitoring program to make sure that the water quality is maintained on it. That's, that's relative to the wells. Relative to the water quality, anytime we have a leach field that is over two thousand gallons per day. They'll require a a nitrate analysis on pollutants that are generally tracked in 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 leachates, and that's called a transmissivity analysis. They have a general analysis that says whether or not any additional screening, but as part of them, you need to provide this water quality monitoring to the DHHS for the leach field and also for the wells. So you apply for the wells. And then have to monitor the wells, that the monitor to meet that they they meet the water quality standard. Before you get permission to put your leach fields in, which the code officer is sent the letter, said, yes, they can proceed with destruction. They have to validate a a nitrate migration analysis through the site and how it might affect the water quality.
Okay, so that's a quality issue that's maybe tied a little more to potentially lots of water quality issue, not a quantity issue.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we've addressed that a little later here.
Yeah.
Greg, in the Haley Ward report, it says nearby wells were monitored for influence from the pump test and showed a dow, draw downs ranging from zero to twelve feet with quick water table recovery in those wells that showed impact. It's the word quick that I have a problem with. I don't know what that means. One, one person's quick is another person's slow. He's two.
And, yep.
And I wonder what, really what that means for these people. Are they gonna have to wait to take their shower? Or some of these people wait to take their shower or do their laundry?
No, I think what we're saying first, you gotta remember that they 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 stress the the test well at a much larger rate to see how it will respond and quick rate, I guess, is that the domestic use of the well that they were using was never really affected. There's a graph on sheet, the last sheet of that same one.
That, that's where, that's where the chairman's question's answered, Greg, the graph you just referenced.
You see the nonlinear recovery. It's not like, oh, it's immediate, it's a, it's a, it's a media drawdown around its cone of influence. And then their cover is quite rapid. I didn't choose any words, word and rapid. They chose it, but I I think the graph and test show sort of graphically on on your your question.
Yeah. That's very helpful. Thank you, Greg.
Anything else, folks?
No, that was, at least for me, that was helpful and 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 the fact that it's in the peer review, I think for me. Gets it across the line.
Yep. Jesse, I see somebody has their hand raised. You wanted to address that, please?
Yeah, that's Dave Mois, I believe.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add to possibly reinforce that is
I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on, Mister Mois.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a planning board member have a question. I thought, I thought the rules
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We didn't have a question of you. I think Greg answered our questions.
He did, okay.
Yep, thank you, though.
Thanks, Dave. I'm, in the genre, I'll also defer if you have anything else on the next time. Thank you.
I was just gonna make a note on that recharge, but if they're satisfied with your answer, then fine.
I'm stood.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that the applicant has met the standard at article nine J. And that the the record demonstrates, including through the Haley Ward peer review that the development is provided with an adequate water, water supply. I think that's it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second on the table to find the water supply condition has been met for stated reason. Any discussion? During that, I'll call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero. Sewer's disposal.
So looking at this, I think the paragraph or subsection one does not apply because there's no public sewage collection or treatment system. So then we go to subsection two.
This public collection system, too.
Right. Right. So then we got a subdivision three where there's a onsite sewage disposal system, meaning the requirements of the subsurface wastewater disposal rules. And subsection four does not apply because we're not sharing common subject systems.
Right, there's no different ownership either.
Right.
One sixty-two.
And I'm looking at the moist letter, design letter that explicitly references the main subsurface wastewater disposal rules. That's good.
And the report says that. Main subsurface wastewater disposal rules. August 3rd, 2015 require a minimum of nine inches of pre-draining soil to be present for the standard installation of a septic system. Outside of any shoreland zone, and it's not in the shoreland zone. And under the provisions of the rules. Moist, moist environmental found a total of seven different areas of suitable soils. For installing wastewater disposal fields scattered across the site.
And then the plans call for just three leach, leach fields.
Therefore, only three of the suitable disposal field locations can be used. Each disposal field will be approximately 30 by 70. Capacity for about 3,300 gallons per day with pre-treatment. We strongly recommend pre-treatment for several reasons, including system longevity and is much more environmentally friendly. In that the BODs, TSS and nitrate loading of the effluent is substantially less. And Greg, I believe last night you talked about pre-treating, correct?
That's correct.
And so, and they will be pre-treated as proposed by moist environmental.
That's correct.
This one seems. Pretty good of, I guess, looks like Brett's looking at something, so.
There was a lot of discussion about this last night and I'm just reviewing the materials. I know that, I, I think it was a, a change in a. That they would add pre-treatment. I don't know that that was initially proposed, that was a move in the right direction. I know there were some discussions about the large circles and whether, you know, that might impact the ability of someone to move their well.
But I don't know. Well, I'm wondering if that gets into groundwater protection.
That's where I was going to address it, but.
Okay, we can do it.
But it seems to me like this requirement is asking for a onsite sewage disposal system that meets the requirements of subsurface wastewater disposal rules.
The way I read it.
And it seems like that's what's proposed. It is like, I, I heard a lot about pre-treatment last night, but it is also helpful to look on page 163 of the big binder. Where in Moise's letter. Dave says, we strongly recommend pre-treatment for several reasons. At the end of the first paragraph, the top paragraph on 163 and. Yeah, so that's. Yeah, seems like the sewage disposal system seems designed and considered and. To meet the requirements.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Who's the lucky person to make a motion here?
I'll make a motion that. Per condition K sewage disposal is met. Because the design or the, the, yeah, the, the design includes onsite sewage disposal systems that meet the requirements of subsurface wastewater disposal rules.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion second on the table to find that the wastewater disposal condition has been met. That's what it is, sewage disposal, sorry, condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three, zero. Moving on to utilities. I should ask, does anybody need a break or are we okay?
Doing okay.
I'm fine.
I, I am too.
I, I was able to eat something before we met, so.
Oh, lucky you.
Blood sugar is still all right. Maybe we keep going, try to get through the.
I assume there's a court reporter, right, Andy?
Yes, we're relying on the recording of the Zoom that Mr. Dunbar is capably managing.
Okay, so there's no in-person, so to speak, in Zoom, court reporter.
No, our court reporter had a conflict that said she could work off of the recording, so there's nobody.
Okay, great. I, I was worried about that person needing a break, okay?
Very good. Yep, thank you.
Okay, let's continue.
So this didn't seem to be a very controversial issue at any of the meetings and comments. You know, at page 165, there's a narrative. And then sheets C dash four. You know, is the utility plan. I'll make a motion that the applicant has met the requirement in Article nine L. As evidenced by the record. Page 165 and sheet C four. And that development provides for electrical telephone and telecommunications service adequate to meet. Anticipated use of the project. They're generally going underground, so they're screened to the, to the extent feasible. Yeah, that's it.
A motion on the second table to find the utility condition met for stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three, zero. Natural features.
Certainly, we've heard a lot about the intent, both from Greg and from Cindy, to make a. Wilderness campground, although at some point we can talk about what wilderness means, but. To be a campground that is, that has trees in it and preserves as many of the trees as possible. And that does seem to. Play out in the, in the, in the application. I think you'd have to go a lot further away from Tremont to find wilderness, but that's for another conversation. I, I also just to point out that. The applicant has looked into significant animal habitat. And that has identified that there are not. Significant animal habitats occurring on the property. They were able to do a wetland. Survey. Yeah, right, yeah, well, survey.
And they provided reports from various agencies, state agencies and federal agencies, I think in a case or two, correct? U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Oh, yeah.
The federal agency, obviously, you know. Seems like an easy one. What do you think, Brett?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, just in walking the site and looking at the. You know, the record at 167. The exhibits there and also the, some of the maps I've looked at it, I mean, it's, I think it's. They aren't preserving the site to the extent they can.
Yep.
Okay, take a motion to effect.
Sure, I'll move that the applicant has. Met the standard at Article nine. Subsection M, natural features as reflected in the record, pages 167. The exhibits attached there too, including a letter from the Fish and Wildlife Service. In that the project. Is designed to preserve in its natural state insofar as practical. The natural. Landscape and minimizes tree removal, compaction of soil. It retains vegetation insofar as practical. And also avoids extensive grading and filling.
Second.
Motion is second is ta, on the table to find that the natural features condition has been met for stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three, zero. Now we come to groundwater protection.
So we talked about this one a lot last night during the. Public hearing.
That's right.
And. I don't remember, maybe it's not in our drawings, that maybe it was just what Greg had shown on the screen, but that. There were 300 foot circles and then at some point we were. We, we asked about like, what is the groundwater impacted all within that 300 circle? That, that, that whole, the extent of that 350, 300 foot circle? And I think Greg said, no, it's probably more like 200, 250. But even the 250 definitely goes into the butters. And so the way I kept looking at this. It seems like. The proposed site development. Does adversely impact the quality of groundwater available to abutting properties. And at least that's where I was at yesterday. I'm curious, Brett and Mark, if, where you guys landed on that.
I saw a lot of, I heard a lot of discussion about whether. The, it met the condition that, or the standard that. It must demonstrate. That the groundwater at the property line will comply following development with the standards for safe drinking waters established by the state of Maine. And I think several people argued that it didn't. And, and basically they were referring to those. 300 foot circles. And someone mentioned that no nitrate tests have been done along those, that property line that you're taught, you've been talking about. And, and I, I, I'm guessing that's the proper way to test for that sort of thing. So maybe Greg can address that. And if that's the case, I'm wondering. Would you agree to a condition that nitrate tests be conducted along that property line before any permit is issued?
Mark, I guess we would accept that. I just want to add that the, the nitrate reduction, water quality through the commitment of pre-treatment is significantly reduced. At a leach field and certainly not at the, not at the 250. And I just want to relate the, you know, the, the groundwater, the two that are upper hires are eight feet below. We know that the groundwater is falling with topography, so. But we'd accept. A condition which we already have to do. If I found a term in your ordinance. That we meet the, we, we've met the subsurface wastewater rules. Those wastewater rules are required that these leach fields. Maintain water quality, with main that determination. Prior, that, that was our position and still is. And as part of the safe process, we have to submit a nitrogen nitrate analysis. And we're happy to provide copies of that and evidence of that and, and monitoring. And maybe Andy wants to speak to us, because we've talked about this a lot today, if you.
I'll, I'll just put up a proposed condition of approval, if you're willing to look at that, members of the board. You'd asked about that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll put it up right now. So, condition four, we, we've, we've talked about one, two, and three in other contexts. I'm going to stay focused on condition number four. And it would be that the applicant must meet all state standards as part of our view of final design of any and all engineered wastewater systems. And must demonstrate that the groundwater at the property line will comply following development with the standards for safe drinking water established by the state of Maine. Including by conducting a state approved form of nitrogen nitrate analysis at the property on. So we'd be willing to make that a condition of approval.
And would the test be conducted at only that one point where the 300 foot circle goes over the property line?
And it, it has to be marked conducted for, in accordance to your standards and the state standards for any leach field that's over. Going to be posed to use over 2,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
Yep, and we can see that, that, that's likely the case on all of them with a maximum capacity is 3,300 gallons per day each. So just to connect those dots that it's going to have to happen. Consistent with the ordinance of 2,000 gallons per day, that's why your ordinance echoes that state standard. It doesn't actually reference the nitrate analysis, which is a little bit cumbersome why we ended up here, but. It will have to happen, just as, just as you stated.
Any other questions for Greg on that?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to be heard on, on this issue. If there are no other questions, I'm happy to wait.
Let us discuss it for a minute.
I mean, it seems reasonable to me. You, you can't, you know, you. My sense is that, you know, like a lot of things with engineering, there are safety factors built in. So these 300 foot rings are. My guess is they're really, there, there's a safety factor built in. And I, and this is what my comment earlier about this, what, what the state, what's the state's involvement, when Greg had talked about it's, it's a quality, it's a quality test. And I think, you know, the only way you can really do it is to test the quality pre and post. Otherwise, you're just speculating as to whether, you know, it has any impact. Post-development, you, you don't know that until they do it. And what I'm hearing is they're going to do that. Post-development. You know, the first thing that popped in my mind was, okay, well, then what happens if the, what happens if the, if it's not good? Do they rip up the, and move the, the. You know, the leach fields? I, I, I'm just curious, what does happen if, if, if that's a problem and it turns out that. Which I, it doesn't sound like it's going to be because they have the pre-treatment piece that I heard Greg's point about how, where it sits in terms of the grade. But I, I found where, you know, there's a lot of concerns about that. And so it, it, does anyone know what, what the state would do if, if it failed the test? Would you have to then go and modify the design or, how was that, how would that work?
There's a statute on the books at Title 38, Section 404 that we can speak to. It provides plenty of protection for neighbors. It says a person is liable for withdrawal of groundwater when the withdrawal causes interference with pre-existing beneficial domestic use of groundwater by a landowner or lawful land occupant. It also goes on to say the rights afforded by this chapter shall be in addition to and not in derogation of any other rights. For the arising under statute or common law, which any person may have to seek redress against any other person for groundwater interference or contamination. So this standard is designed to say development, following development. Meet the requirement that you're not going to cause a problem at the property line. We're willing to have a condition of approval. We're also very focused on the fact, we don't want to be liable as far. We're also very focused on the fact we don't want to be liable as part of any civil litigation. But the law is clear as Maine Municipal Association has advised planning boards throughout the land. Planning boards aren't to determine civil questions. Those are for the courts. And the bottom line is these neighbors are all protected by the existing statutory law. And we're, we're going to couple that with a requirement, you know, meeting the, the, the concerns that have been expressed. That we make sure that our wastewater systems are designed so that we have to meet the nitrate analysis. At the time that state permits are secured. So. We're, we're wearing belts and suspenders here. I'm not sure that we need to, but we want to because we want to make sure the neighbors have that assurance.
Andy, was that Title thirty eight, section four oh four?
Title thirty eight, section four oh four, subsections two and three B.
Thank you. Ms. Chow, I'll give you. Little time here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I. I object to a condition of a nitrate analysis in this context, and the reason for that is as follows. And, and if it would be helpful, I think Matt Reynolds is here to describe. Why it is that these concentric circles of the wellhead protection do not address. The groundwater quality at the property line. It's simply the wrong standard and it is the only evidence in the record. The applicant has had the burden throughout to make sure that each of these standards are met. The public hearing is closed. They've not met, they've not shown any evidence that they can meet the standard using this proxy of this three hundred foot circle. It doesn't address groundwater quality at the property line. And now what they want to do, since they haven't met their burden. Is to say there's a condition you can impose for a nitrate analysis. Since October fifth, Mr. Reynolds from Drummond Environmental has been raising this issue. This is not a new issue that was just raised. It was raised in his report. On the fifth of October, it was raised on the fifteenth of October, and it was discussed in detail last night. And then the public hearing closed. So as it stands, the applicant has not met its burden and it's inappropriate to use conditions of approval. For the applicant to fail to meet their burden to address. The groundwater quality at the property line. So I would respectfully submit that where conditions of approval may be appropriate in certain circumstances. This is not one of them. This is a burden issue and the applicant simply has failed to meet it. And if, if the board would like to hear from Mr. Reynolds, he is here to, to answer any questions that the board may have. As to why it is that the only evidence in the record in their application. You will not be able to point to any place in the application that supports meeting this standard. Because the three hundred foot circle does not meet that standard.
Thank you.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, but let me ask the board if they have any questions first.
I feel like my question is more for Diane. About the sort of latitude or the, the extent to which we can conditionally. Sort of apply conditions throughout this process. And Attorney Chow mentioned that there. Sometimes conditions are okay and sometimes they're not. I'm sort of curious as our. Counsel, what your advice is Diane on that front?
Yeah, I did look into that a bit today. The. There has been a similar case decided by the law court where there was a condition that a property owner or the applicant had to show there'd be no. Odors at a lot line. And the planning board did approve it on the condition that they would have an independent. Appropriate consultant go and do that kind of testing and then, you know, had to pass. And I went to the law court because the applicant appealed it and said, well, the planning board didn't have that authority and, and the law court upheld it and said, in that situation they did. So it's definitely present near for authority in order to make it a condition.
Now, what did Haley Ward say about this? I think they were okay with it, correct?
Yeah, that's what I was just looking for. I was trying to see.
Did not address this issue, Mr. Chairman. It is not in their report. The issue of groundwater quality at the property line, they did not address.
I, I think it's implicit in the Haley Ward, but I did have a response to what Attorney Chow argued earlier. And what I wanted to do is just have the chance to respond briefly.
Yes, just hold on Andy.
Sure.
I'm not sure Haley Ward did address it.
Oh, it's on one eighty two of the. Applicants, well, actually one eighty one, one eighty two.
Did we give Andy his minute of rebuttal or so? Or to make his comments, time to make his comments, or you guys want to?
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready.
Brett?
Yeah.
Okay, Andy, please keep it short.
Sure. So I, I use the fact that in any land use proceeding, the law court uses a standard called the substantial evidence test. Substantial evidence says even if you've got two experts that are competing and you have one lay witness. That provides competent evidence. The substantial tap, evidence test that is used by the law court, is there any competent evidence that supports the conclusion by the board? I submit to you that we've got three data points that would, would. Provide competent evidence, any substantial evidence to support your finding. First, there's a really key statement in the Haley Ward report of October eighth, twenty twenty one. That goes along with your standard. The October eight, twenty twenty one report, because we're going to groundwater quality now. And the only issue that Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Moise, Mr. Johnston have all talked about. Is are we going to have nitrates or nitrogen that's released by the wastewater system? Nobody suggested that there's either contamination in the area of the property lines. That was a specific statement made in the proceedings during the public hearing. There is no contamination in the area. So let's take a look at your standard N. And see what it says. It says the applicant. Where we've got, and we do have sewage disposal system, that's why they're called engineered systems with a capacity of two thousand gallons per day or greater. Must demonstrate that the groundwater at the property line will comply following development. There's a key statement made in the Haley Ward report, which I would disagree with Ms. Chow. It doesn't address groundwater quality. It certainly does. What Mr. Reynolds has been talking about, what Mr. Moise and Mr. Johnston have all been talking about is addressed on page two. In section one of Article eight submission requirements. It says the following, there's still design work that is required to finalize the wastewater onsite systems. But it is Haley Ward's opinion that the applicant provided sufficient evidence with a preliminary site evaluation report, report prepared by a licensed site evaluator. That would be Mr. Moise. And utilize the information provided by the LSE to choose areas and sizes that would provide adequate onsite sewage disposal. He's also recommended pre-treatment. So there, there, there's, there's tertiary protection here. The first wave is he's provided a preliminary site design, which is all you can do. In a land use proceeding like this, you can't do a final engineered design. You don't do that. That, that happens with the state and Mr. Reynolds has testified to that as, 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 as Mr. Moise. And so what Haley Ward says is, stay tuned folks, when they go through their state review, that's when they're going to have to do the nitrate nitrogen analysis and we're conditioning. We're proposing a condition, as Attorney O'Connell said, has been used in other cases, as a means to say. There's plenty here to buttress a finding, a positive finding that you can make on the standard. All we need to do is use logic of the ordinance. The ordinance says following development. It doesn't say right now. That wouldn't make any sense. Because these engineered systems are designed systems. These systems over two thousand gallons per day. Require a design review and approval process, which is going to happen by the state. So our condition of approval says we're happy to submit to. A state approved form of analysis such that by the time we are able to go forward with an approved. Wastewater, subsurface wastewater system. We're not going to affect. Any groundwater at the property. We can't, we won't. I'm not going to advise the applicant to open a campground and be subject to a claim under Title thirty eight, section.
Okay, okay. Thanks. I think we go, I think we got the point, Andy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just one quick rebuttal point, Mr. Chair. The state does not require and does not measure. These things at the property line. Your ordinance does. So the fact that you're going to say in the future, we, we have to meet this for the state. Does not answer the question of your standard in your ordinance.
Thank you. But the ordinance does say following development. So how can you answer a question before something happens?
So that's why the condition will require that tied to your ordinance, we meet the specific standards because that was the proposed language of the condition. Happy to provide that again.
I'm sorry, but that, that, that standard says they have to show now that after development. There, there will be safe drinking water at the property line. And what Mr. Reynolds testified to is that a very common way to do that is to do a nitrate analysis. They've not submitted that. They say they're going to do that. They haven't met their burden and they haven't put any evidence now.
Attorney Chow, what good would a nitrate analysis now, before development? Show us with respect to the water quality after development. It's just nonsensical.
Well, I would like, I would like for Matt Reynolds to answer that question more technically, but I.
I don't need, I don't need an expert to tell me that. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just common sense.
Well, common, Mr. Johnston has said that leach field number one needs to stay where it is because of the soils. You have in a butter down gradient who's concerned that her well. Could be contaminated and there's no evidence to show that that's not the case. I'm not suggesting that it is contaminated, but this standard says. In order to do this development, you need to show ahead of time. That yes, a nitrate analysis is a prediction that post development, there will not be. That, that there will be safe drinking water at the property line. And if it's not, then this development should not be approved. It's a simple matter of whether the standard can be met and it is a prediction. A lot of these standards are about predictions. But there is a way to measure it and there is a standard way to measure it as these engineers have talked about. The nitrate analysis isn't a complicated thing and it can be done and should be done and is commonly done at this stage, at the, at the local. Planning board approval stage. And this is what your standard, the standard in your ordinance requires.
So we've agreed to a condition and the record shows that Mr. Reynolds had a slide up that says Bar Harbor, Falmouth. Other communities require an analysis at the property line. Your ordinance doesn't say that, but we've agreed to a condition such that we have to do it. So we, we weren't prepared because the ordinance doesn't objectively call out what we have to do to comply with the ordinance. Other, other than the language we're looking at and as has been pointed out by the board and we pointed out, it's following development. So. We're, we're willing to provide that level of protection that's provided by other communities, even though this community doesn't have that analytical requirement and its standards. We'll, we'll, we'll live with that.
Just because a nitrate analysis is not a, a term used in this ordinance does not mean. That you don't have to provide positive evidence that of groundwater quality at the property line. Currently, no evidence in the record in this application, in this hearing, that they can do that. The three hundred foot circles don't do that. They don't challenge that fact. And so I don't believe a condition of approval can be a substitute for their failure to meet their burden on this standard.
I suspect we'll go back.
I'm going to blow the whistle right now.
Thanks, Mark. I, I think we've heard argument.
It's just going to get too much back and forth between the two attorneys. Thank you, though.
I mean, one thing that came out of this though is that. Mr. Reynolds did recommend pre-treatment, which presumably has an impact. And they, I think they agreed to do that. I mean, that was, and that was not originally proposed.
I think it is. I mean. In Moise's. Pre-design or whatever it's called, like the design of the septic doesn't recommend pre-treatment.
Right, but I don't think they're originally going to do that. I think that was, I think they decided to do that in response to. Mr. Reynolds report. Maybe I missed that. Maybe Greg, you would propose that all along. I don't.
Yeah, we were, we were not. Going to take the recommendations of our experts on the team that have been our plan all along. To, to use the best available technology at the campground.
Okay, okay. So the comment in that letter then from. Mr. Reynolds, I guess I misread that. I mean, another thing that's interesting in that letter is. In the one hand says that the three hundred foot. Setback is not an established standard.
Are you talking about the Reynolds letter?
Yeah. But then.
Would it be helpful, Mr. Reynolds is here?
No, I, I actually, no, it's not. I, I just want to talk about with Lawson and, and Mark. It seems to. Then use that three hundred foot. Standard to, to argue that. That leach field. One is less than three hundred feet from the property line. So it's kind of interesting to say on the one hand, it's not a standard and then. It appears to use that as a standard. So, so, so yeah, Mr. Reynolds, if he's here, if you could clarify what. What your, what, it's, it's in a paragraph on your letter. It's beginning with finally. Clarify what. A little bit about where you. A little bit about what you're saying about the three hundred foot setback and you say it's not well.
I'd be glad to if, if you like, Mr. Wilson. So the, the, what, what I was stating is that. The three hundred foot circle. Is what the applicant had proposed. To demonstrate. That groundwater, that the groundwater protection is standard is met. And that groundwater will comply with safe drinking water standards at the property line. So that's what's in the record. Is their proposal that those three hundred foot circles define safe drinking water. I don't agree that that's the appropriate. Um, measure. I think it's more appropriate to do the nitrate analysis that. Has been discussed and I think that should have been part of the submission. In order to meet the standards of the ordinance. But what I was pointing out. Is that what's in the record? Is that three hundred foot circle proposal? Which if you take it on its face value demonstrates that the, the project actually doesn't meet. The groundwater protection standard. So, um, um. First, first was this is what you have in front of you. And it shows that this, the project doesn't meet the standard. And the second is a comment that I think a more appropriate analysis. That could have been and should have been done. Is the, is a nitrate analysis that's discussed.
But then you assume that anything within that three hundred foot. C- circle. Uh, you, you can't put a, the, the water is gonna be contaminated.
I didn't say that. I said that that's what, that's what the applicant said.
Well, but the applicant also talked about using. You, you, that you could put a wall within that, within the, those zones with. Uh, additional casements or additional engineering. So I, I guess the testimony is conflicting on that point. But thank you, though.
Go ahead, Mark.
Well, I'm curious and I, I guess I'll ask Greg. Uh, how is a nitrate test conducted? What, what, what does this involve?
We should also remember we have Mr. Moise here too. So Mr. Johnston and Mr. Moise.
And we have Mr. Reynolds too, Andy.
Yep. Um, so there's a number of different ways to do a nitrate analysis to do through a mass balance. Uh, equation, um. Um, models, basically, it's consideration of what's already in the ground. For nitrites. Um, we've started looking at testing background ni- nitrates. Um, and I'll also just wanna point out what's on the record is not only there, but our testimony. Um, both yesterday and here that we've begun our pre-screening. Um, whether or not we meet the drinking water standard. Pre-screening is a, a form for the DHSS that said, okay, how, how much of analysis? Do we need to do? So there's background analysis on um, um, water. Um, there's recharge from rain and it's an involved process that has standards. And I think it's deserving of independent agency that I can actually rule on it. Uh, review those. And if we had found the term nitrate analysis in your ordinance like we do in Bar Harbor or say Belfast. Um, we would have done it. But certainly we know that we um. Have to do it out of these any argument. And I actually think we're in agreement with that. Um, we're confident we've started that process of looking at it in many different ways. We've started the testing for. We've engaged the state in some conversations about how it's gonna unfold and we've already talked to them about other wells in the area. So. I don't think the, there's no evidence that we haven't looked at on the record. Testimony is valid. Um, certified geologists had also believed testified yesterday. They had begun looking at it. We often work with geologists in doing the transversivity analysis. So, Mark, hopefully that helps you. Um, and then following um, um, approval fight. We actually have. Sorry.
Uh, that's okay. I, 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 I have to admit, I, I don't understand. I just, well, how do you perform a nitrate test? Are you saying you look at the nitrate? It's in the soil itself? Tell me the layman's version, not the engineering version.
What exists in the, what exists in the groundwater now? What exists maybe from potential rain sources? And then what potentially your leach field can add to that? And the leach field that potentially at some forty milligrams per liter is typically what leaves the leach field. And then how quickly is that dissipated is based on many factors um, in the ground, based on. Um, saturated, saturated hydraulic conductivity and many factors that engineers at the state review. And then following that, there's testing procedures in on the wells to confirm that these things are, are working as function. So. Um. I don't know if that's less or more.
So you have to dig into the soil at some point. Do you drill little test pits or whatever?
We have to dig, uh, we have to dig test pits uphill, downhill, make conductivity tests to support the data we submit to the state. Um, and again, it's a, it's a fair independent review of a model which isn't in the ordinance and um. We've started that, that work. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kirkman, I just would like to make an objection for the record. Anything that Mr. Johnson has said about what they've begun in the process tonight. Is not part of the record. It's not testimony. It's, it's uh, evidence that has come in after the public hearing is closed. And um, and it should be excluded to, to demonstrate that they've met this standard.
That's actually not correct. Haley Ward did a peer review and Mr. Johnston responded at the peer review, including on wastewater and septic. So I, I think. I, I think request to strike things from the record. That's not helpful. The, the board's trying to understand the evidence.
How these tests are conducted.
And Mr. Good, could I answer yours? A part of your question to me that also relates, cause they're interrelated to septic. Um, I'd like Mr. Moise to chime in a bit, but that's how the tests are performed. Um, but also Dave, if you wanted to comment on your experience and how we work together.
I think we're getting a little far afield here.
Okay, thank you. We're fine.
Could Mr. Reynolds be heard on this issue? You've heard from Mr. Johnson on the nitrate analysis.
Specific question.
It's. To have Matt.
Um, it's, it's frustrating that Mr. Moise did the background work for the applicant. He's here tonight and you don't even wanna talk to him?
I mean, I, I would definitely, Mark, be curious either here for Matt or Dave. Um, no, dude, you know, like with all due respect to Greg, I don't. Feel very satisfied by the answer. Like, I sort of wanna know, like, if I was walking through the woods and somebody was doing a nitrate analysis, how could I tell? Like, what does it actually look like? And. Maybe Dave could answer that question.
Okay, and we should probably give, okay, we'll go with Dave. Give Matt a few, a few minutes too. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, would you like me to speak, sir, or Mr. Chairman or Matt Reynolds?
You're muted, Mark.
Yeah, I realize that. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lawson Wilson had a question.
Was that for me?
I'll, I'll say voice. Uh, can you describe what a nitrate analysis looks like?
Typically involves, number one, you need to know what the septic, final septic design is gonna be. You need to know the length of the bed. The length of the disposal bed. Lies along the contour of the ground. So with that width, we project what they call nitrate plumes. And that follows the contour. And it basically eventually may or may not reach towards the property line. But that's part of the analysis. And we look at what, as Greg said, uh, what the typical loading rate is for nitrogen, what the background rate is for nitrogen. And it goes into, it's basically a mathematical model. Um, one of the things that, that I would mention is that. If, if people understand what pre-treatment does, uh, in which we've submitted that, that's what we're gonna do. That is the, the treatment of the nitrogen and the reduction nitrogen is implicit in that. These, these types of units that we're using reduce nitrogen load by fifty percent before. It, it enters the disposal field. So before it leaves, even enters the disposal field, a total nitrogen. By fifty percent by these pre-treatment units. So if you have an understanding of pre-treatment, then, then. Um, that's one of the reasons why we recommended that.
And so it sounds like a nitrate analysis. Does not happen in the field. It's like. It, it's not involve somebody in the woods with a.
Well, we'll be doing, we'll be doing additional soil test pits, as, as Greg said, we're doing backhoe test pits. Um, both the area where the field is and then at least fifty, fifty feet down slope. To look at the, what the transmission, soil transmission of the hydraulic rate is for the water moving through. Um, then there's laboratory testing involved and that all goes into this mathematical model that I described. It's, that's the simple version.
Thanks.
Lawson, did you have a question for Mr. Reynolds or not?
Sure, yeah. I'll, I'll ask Mr. Reynolds to sort of. Uh, either disagree or agree with that sort of description. Help us understand if there's something that we're missing. Um, and, and then I'm also particularly curious about the testing at the property line, which is something that I think you. Reference and certainly the ordinance refers to that term. And would that be a test that you would do in the field or is that a mathematical model that you're, that we're calculating?
So just, just to expand on what Mr. Moise just said. The, the nitrate analysis is, is a mathematical calculation. It's not a measurement in the field. It's a mathematical calculation about how far. The influence of the septic system will migrate away from that septic system. So in the case of Leach Field one. Which is, you know, two hundred and eighty feet or whatever it is from the property boundary. It's a calculation based on the amount of water that goes into Leach Field. At a certain particular concentration of nitrate. As to whether that will reach, when it reaches the property boundary or, or any other point. Along its flow path, what is the concentration of nitrate calculated to be? So it's not a. Um. It's not a field test. It doesn't involve a lot of, um, you know, additional information. Um. It, it, it's, it's just a calculation to, to estimate. You know, whether there's a sufficient um, dilution. Of that nitrate as, as it moves. Another, just another point that I think has been. Um. Um, merged. Is that the state requirement for an engineered wastewater treatment system? Requires two additional things, neither of which are a nitrate analysis. So it requires a transmissivity, it, it requires a mounding analysis. Which is, if you put this much water over this footprint. Is it going to mound up into the septic system? Or does it percolate down into the ground adequately? And it requires an analysis of whether. The water that moves out from under the septic system downhill is gonna stay in the ground. And so a nitrate analysis. The, the only, the, the process where a nitrate analysis would be required by the state. And reviewed by the state. Would be if this project was. Some required to have a site location of development application. With, which is the DEP, which is a different agency. And I know this is all confusing. But if this project. Had required us load a site location of development permit. Then as part of that, there would be a nitrate analysis that was required. And reviewed by the state. In the event that this is not a site location of development. Project, project. There would be no review by the state of this nitrate analysis. And so you'd still be left. With, with a submill by the applicant that hadn't been reviewed by anybody, cause it's not gonna be reviewed. By the state. The Health Department of Health Engineering, which is the engineered septic system, folks. I hope that's not too confusing, but. Discussed as one giant thing, but it's a little, couple pieces.
It helps. Yeah, no, thank you for that. So. The, I don't, the, the way I'm sort of seeing this feels like, um, and now I'm sort of hoping to talk most of the other planning board members. But, um. Is that. Like after last night and even being tonight, it does feel like. As submitted, um, that condition was not met. And it actually feels very similar to the diagonal parking. Which as submitted was, there was no signage or uh. Like permanent lines marking the diagonal parking. And so we added that as a condition. Greg agreed to some. You know, markings on the, on the, on the ground that would. Show that and address that, that condition. And uh. And it seems to me like. I think that the condition that Andy put up on the screen and maybe we'll need to look at that again before we're. Ready to. Resolve this. Um. But that if there's a way that we can address and feel. At a condition that says, yes, we are gonna make sure that. The. Groundwater at the property line um, is not adversely impacted.
I mean, uh, from, from me, the, the only way we move forward on this is with a condition.
Right.
Because I don't know how you, I, I'm still struggling with the following development piece and whether that's something you can actually do now or. Or establish now, so theoretically, or it's something you, you would do, you know, after I. After the all, it's all engineered. Um.
Well, I mean, but isn't the following development, isn't that, I mean, the whole thing? Like, we know where the parking lots are gonna be following development. We know where the buildings are gonna be following development.
Yeah, I see what you're getting. I mean, does it, does it mean temporally, like actually after development or does it just mean that you need to show now that after development? It won't in, it won't impact.
Having rereading this anyway, I think it's now. Because it said must demonstrate that the groundwater at the property line will comply. Following development with the standards for safe drinking water. As established for the state of Maine.
Yeah, so then what we've, what we have is the narrative. We've got pre-treatment. Um. We've got a comment from Haley Ward. Um, and then we've got a proposed condition.
Right.
And then we have Ms. Chow's argument that uh. We shouldn't rely on a condition. We should reject the, or, or uh. We should uh, uh, not uh. Find the conditions. Approve this because that condition has never not been that.
Yeah, can I address that point, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So what, what concerns me is that Mr. Reynolds, who's been very fair. In his testimony as to when a nitrate analysis is required. And it matches my understanding. Under the Site Location Development Act, you do a nitrate analysis and DEP staff reviews. And I'd have no problem whether or not we have a Site Location Development Act project that has to go through a full-blown slotter review. Happy to make sure the nitrate analysis is peer reviewed by DEP. Don't have a problem with that, nor does Mr. Johnston. What, what I object to is the fact that Mr. Reynolds put up on one of his slides, as he had to. That Tremont, unlike Bar Harbor, Falmouth, other communities that require a nitrate analysis at the property line. Um, Attorney O'Connell stated it. The, the applicant has to have ground rules before it, that it knows that it has to follow. We know we have to meet the standard, but I thought Mr. Reynolds said it very well. You do a mathematical calculation using the analysis of how far nitrogen will migrate away from the subsurface system as designed. Everybody agrees that when you've got an engineered system, you put a lot of effort into that. Um, and yet your ordinance says you gotta make contact with the agencies if you're gonna get a permit from them. Um, or you may have to get a permit from them. And then later you condition the approval. So. I'd like to put up the condition of approval again to just show you why the applicant wasn't subject to the nitrate analysis standard. We're still willing to live with that because we think that's the right thing to do. And just obviate this concern. So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to show.
I'm gonna ask the board, do we need to see that again?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll wanna see it again before we, yeah, I, it would help. Yeah, that'd be great.
It's really more and more important.
And we might change the language to it if we need to, but um.
Oh, so they basically change. Basically added that to the. I, I kinda understand what he's getting at, Mark, you know, and, and. This came up about, you know, are regulations fairly apprising applicants of what's expected? It's. Certainly something we ought to consider when we look at these rules again. Um, but I, I guess from my perspective, I feel like with the pre-treatment in place with the, the way that the. The differences in elevation and the. The differences in elevation and the condition. And as well as some of the statutory protections. At least from a. Would, you know, with that condition. I can live with it.
Yeah, I think that for me. Until we get to the condition, it does not feel like the applicant spent the burden of proof that like, I I don't. You know, uh, and and in fact. It actually looked like without the condition, it looks like the applicant. Like, it's pretty clear that, like. There is, there there may impact the property line, like. It may it may impact the butters. But I feel like with the condition saying that we are going to conduct a state approved nitrogen nitrate analysis at the property line. That that will. That will address, address it.
I tend to agree. Who who's talking?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt, I, but I do have something to say once you're finished.
Seems like we have, uh, go ahead, Ms. Chow.
Okay, thank you, I'll be, I'll be very quick. Um, I I would just let. Mr. Hamilton mischaracterized what Mr. Reynolds said about the nitrate analysis. I think he's had his hand up and I think it's fair since he, since Mr. Hamilton is is mischaracterizing. That all he is saying is that this is a nitrate analysis would be required by the state for SLODA. Unless this applicant is willing to accept the condition of approval that they have to go to to DEP for SLODA. Review. I I think we need to understand from Mr. Reynolds. When a nitrate analysis is appropriate to meet your standards, in other words. They have to demonstrate to the planning board satisfaction, not to the states, your ordinance requires. That AWL satisfies to the planning board's satisfaction demonstrates to your satisfaction. That this has been met and to do that now. So I would, I would like it if Mr. Reynolds could just briefly address that and clarify. Because I think Mr. Hamilton has mischaracterized what he said.
Okay. It's an important point, we'll allow him. To respond. Andy, could you take down your? Thank you.
I I don't, I don't think I have anything to add to Ms. Chow's comment, I that that's what I wanted to clarify is that. Is that the. Ordinance didn't specify a nitrate analysis. The ordinance simply required a demonstration. To the planning board. And the only demonstration it's been provided in the three hundred foot circles which demonstrate that the project doesn't meet the standard. So I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Go ahead, Brad.
Well, you could also, maybe I'm off base here. The the pre-treatment piece, as I understand it, was reduces the nitrate, it's, I mean, that's, that's the whole point.
Yeah.
So so that's some evidence in favor of meeting the standard and then the the, you know, I know Greg has. Mentioned a few times that it's, there there's a difference in elevation. Yeah, look, this is not, this is one of these situations where I think that our standard, it's a tough one, you know, it's.
One of the many cases.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tough one for an applicant to meet. Because it doesn't provide.
Clear guidance?
Yeah, a clear objective standard, so I, I mean, I, but I do think that what, what the, what they're proposing in total. Is a reasonable proposal.
It seems to me there are three choices here. We approve this condition with the condition. We find that it's not met. Where else we ask for more information somehow?
The. It's one of the concerns that we've heard a lot from the butters. For the community, sort of concerns about the ground groundwater and. Um, I think that it makes sense. And I sort of appreciate that the applicant has. Has tried to sort of respond to those. I will acknowledge that, like, here we are, the the final day looking at a condition. And, you know, you know, of course, would have been great if we had had this built in six months ago, but we're here and I and I'm comfortable with that and I think that. That the state nitrate nitrogen. Test or analysis for the property line. Would would be useful and will should address and make it very clear that, no, there will not be infiltration or. Adverse impacts on neighboring properties.
So are you suggesting that be done before we find this met?
No, I'm suggesting that we find it conditional. That that, you know, that that's a requirement, just the way we're requiring them to mark their diagonal park parking spaces. And that. They don't have to go out and mark parking spaces tonight, they just have to do that before the project, you know, as as part of the project. You know, construction.
Right. Brad?
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I agree.
You you accept, you think we should just approve this with that condition?
That condition, yes. Well.
Or do we want to change the condition somewhat? Flash that up again, Andy, please.
Well, I think it's going to be, I mean, obviously, it's going to be, we we need to get the results and it needs to, you know, we need to be satisfied that they've met that before we. Before.
Before permit is issued.
Yeah, you know, see, I don't know if it says that, it doesn't really necessarily spell that out, so maybe it should.
Well, I think any conditions that we have, they they have to meet it before, I mean, that. All you can finish it upon that.
Yeah, it's right at the top, plural, it's this case from, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, one other question that the, that the, uh, the public raised was about like recourse and. And I think that. That Andy sort of addressed that a little bit, talking about the state statute that talks about sort of a butter's rights and. And so I I I don't feel like it's actually like that that would be a part of the condition that we wouldn't make a conditioner up. We want to sort of link that civil responsibility in the future. To this, that that's a separate body, um, or separate. Legal process.
Is a civil process.
Right, and so I guess I'm just acknowledging that I that I feel like this. The, what we're doing is looking at the application, the the. For development and want to make sure that the design and the construction are sort of aligned in our ordinance. And that the operation of it. Is a sort of different matter. And so if if the leach field fails in five years. That's an issue, but that's not dealt with now through the planning board, that's what I'm saying.
Andy, you can take that down now, please.
Mr. Chairman, as long as that's up, can I make a a quick comment on the actual language of the condition?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Andy, would you, I'm sorry, would you mind, thank you. We still object to handling this issue this way. But if if you are leaning towards a condition, you you have to indicate here. That the the applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board. Um, not to the, to the state, because unless, we don't know if. If this is going to be subject to SLODA unless this, and this applicant, I believe, should be made to. To comply with SLODA, but this just says it, that the applicant meets all state standards. And and your ordinance requires that you are satisfied as the planning board that they've met this standard.
So you're saying state standards don't apply unless SLODA kicks in?
Well, I'm I'm saying that this condition of approval means nothing if it isn't to the satisfaction of this planning board, because it's. It's a standard within your ordinance. Regardless of what any state requirements might be, if they are subject to SLODA. We cannot make, they review this under SLODA, but you can be and should because it's it's required in your ordinance. And hasn't been met by the applicant.
I I think I can fairly address Attorney Chow's concern. Um, I'm happy with the language that she suggests, must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the town. Because what often happens with conditions of approval is you don't get any downstream permits until you meet the conditions and so. Um, I'm happy to have it say must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the town. And that kind of goes along with what Mr. Reynolds' concern was, he he wants to make it clear that. There's a demonstration here on the nitrate analysis, it's got to come back to the town and somebody at the town's got to sign off. I kind of like state approved form of nitrogen nitrate analysis because then you know, somebody at the state who's familiar with it would be looking over her shoulder. And again, I'd stipulate, it's got to be done to DEP's approval. How we do that. Is interesting, but I think it could be fine with to the satisfaction of the town, so to put it back.
Satisfaction of the town and the state.
Well, it should be the town planning board, this is not something that that the CEO should be able to rubber stamp. This is your standard, you you have to be satisfied that the standard is met. As a board.
What do you think about that, Andy? You have no objection to being the planning board, right?
Um, yeah, I just, I'm just curious about timing, but um, as long as it it's to the 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 satisfaction of the. Town parenthetical planning board, I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, plenty more members. Any thoughts? Heavy size.
Yeah, I mean, I I I mean, I think that the. Like, surely all these conditions need to be met. The conditions that we're applying, the conditional conditions. And the process of. Uh, verifying that they've been met. I think that. I don't know, maybe each one's a little different, I I I don't feel like the planning board needs to inspect the parking. Dialing a parking lines. Maybe. A butter's groundwater is a little. I I think, I think, like, I keep saying, like, equating these two things, even though they're not equal, like, I do think that diagonal parking lines is a different order of magnitude of. Impact than groundwater qualities, like, that is, that that is clear. And so maybe it does make sense that the CEO is responsible for making sure that the applicant complies with diagonal parking lines. And the planning board is responsible for making sure that the applicant complies with groundwater protection.
Go ahead.
I I guess it depends, it depends on whether it's a completely objective standard or not. You know, if it's a matter of the test is, if the test is greater than ten, it's fine, if it's less than ten, it's not. Anyone can do that, if it requires some sort of subjective judgment. Then it probably should go to the planning board, I don't know what, you know, whether we're going to get a test, it's got a green light on it or a red light or what what that's going to look like. So I I don't know, maybe Greg, yeah, Greg's got a standpoint, it's like, I don't know, like, if it's just a test you look at and it says you're clear, great, I mean. You know, uh.
You would, Jesse, get a letter, you would, you would get a letter back from the state stating that we met the requirements of the transmissivity. From DEP or DHHS, they both review. They require that whether you're on a slot or an engineered system, there's a requirement of the transmissivity test on the nitrate. And to be a letter issued back that we've met that standard. Which would then allow the local plumber inspector to review and issue a permit.
Well, I'm fine, if it looks like that, then I'm okay with delegating that to Jesse, I don't think we need to convene the board to do that.
Yeah, and we're not just saying any nitrogen nitrate analysis, we're saying the state approved form of nitrogen. And so like, that gives it a little bit of specificity in terms of what it is that we're acquiring.
So I would propose that it may modify to say the town.
And.
And planning board.
Requires a planning board to convene or not, I don't think we've ever reconvened on a condition. Because they typically are pretty objective, you either meet it or you don't, and that's kind of what I'm.
Well, I didn't consider that, you know.
That's what we're getting at, Mark, it's whether we need to actually reconvene the board to consider whether a condition is met. And if the, if it's a, if it's a completely objective condition. You know, we either paint the stripes or you don't, or the test comes, the test comes back and says, you know, test approved. Or test not approved, I don't think we need to convene the planning board to do that, that's that's perfectly, something we can delegate perfectly well. Uh, to Jesse to make, ensure that that standard's been met, or maybe, I don't even know, maybe you meet with Jesse. Uh, Mark, to go through those, but I know we don't. Um, reconvene on those because they're just very simple things, it's either it's met or it's not.
Okay, yeah, I I I agree with you.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, what what I, what I think makes sense is that the applicant must meet all state standards as part of the final review, a final design. Of any and all engineered wastewater systems, that is DHE, Division of Health Engineering. Um, the second part is independent and must demonstrate to the CEO. That the groundwater at the property line will comply following development with the standards for safe drinking water. Established by the state of Maine, including by conducting a state approved form of ni- nitrogen nitrate analysis at the property line. In this case, we know the CEO and town manager can call on resources, you've done that as part of peer review, so. Um, we're happy to 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 make that clear.
Okay, uh, let me, uh, call upon the CEO slash town manager, are you okay with that?
Yes.
And I, and I guess I would just point out that, like, it's within the CEO's purview, that, like, if the CEO doesn't feel like. He or she or whoever the CEO is when this comes up, like. If they want to ask a different engineer, if they want to come back to the planning board, like, but we're saying to the CEO, like. If you can make the decision, make the decision, that's your job, like.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to register my objection to this, this is a planning board standard that the planning board needs to meet. It's a standard in your ordinance that said the planning board needs to meet already.
You you mentioned that several times, okay, go ahead.
And 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 my, and my point is that you shouldn't, you should not be relegating this to a condition when when the, there is a consensus on the record that this. That there's no evidence in the record that this has been met, and so you are now using this as a condition, but then you're not having them come back to you. This needs to come back to the planning board, it needs to be demonstrated to the planning board satisfaction and not, and not. Uh, delegated to the CEO because it is a planning board function and it's the planning board that needs to approve this.
Uh, caution, she's trying to loop us back for a second planning board proceeding, so.
Hold on, I'm going to ask Diane O'Connell for her opinion on what Ms. Chow just suggested.
So I, um, I have something to offer as a, um, the the board has the authority to de- delegate. And what I would recommend is having the towns, having it reported back to the town CEO. And and he can make a recommendation to the planning board. And the planning board can meet to accept or reject that recommendation, I don't believe it needs to be another. You know, for public hearing to do that. I do agree that that it should be the planning board that make that final decision.
Okay. We've been discussing this for a long time, anybody care to sort of make a motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'll try unless.
Put his document back up.
The, 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 the difficult part is, uh, uh, the condition.
I've, I've, I think I've got it. Um, but great, that'll help too. Um, so I, I guess before I make the motion, is, do you think that this is, is this, are we finding it met with a condition or are we finding that it's not met, but will be once there's a, I guess we find it met.
As with a condition.
Yeah, okay. So I make a motion that, uh, we're, and, uh, that condition and groundwater protection has, uh, has been met on the condition that the applicant, uh, must meet all state standards as part of review of the final design of any and all engineered wastewater systems and must demonstrate to the CEO who will make a recommendation to the planning board that the groundwater at the property line will comply following development with the standards for safety. Drinking water as established by the state of Maine, including by conducting a state approved form of nitrogen nitrate analysis at the property line.
Very good. Do I have a second from you, Brett?
I will second, yes.
A motion is second on the table to find that the, uh, uh, water quality protection standard has been met, uh, with a condition as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Brett.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Three oh with the condition. Uh, folks, it's getting on nine thirty. We haven't made it through the, uh, what do we have? How many left? What if you left? What do you want to do? Andy? You mentioned last night something about continuing until, um, was it the ninth or the sixth, the ninth? I can't remember.
So the majority of what's left is not applicable. And I was just wondering if you extend another half hour and see how far you go.
I'm okay with that.
With that, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, the rest of it is, the rest is, I mean, we might be able to get through the site plan, both maybe.
Yeah, let's give it a try, okay? Good for that. You up for it? You, you up for Lawson?
Sure.
Bring me another cup of coffee up.
Yeah, right.
I'm fading here. And by the way, for those interested, I was handed something a few minutes ago, uh, looks like USN four Atlanta one. Bottom of the second. Okay. Going on to, um, he has his special and radioactive materials.
Did we? Skip O.
No, that was water quality protection. So we just spent the last forty-five minutes or so.
Thought we, we're working a paragraph N, groundwater protection.
Oh, oh, yes. Oh, I, I circled the wrong one. You're right. I told you it's getting late. You sure you want me to continue, Andy?
Um, okay. So O is water quality protection.
Yes. Do you see anything applicant go there?
Not really.
Well, they are going to have, uh, their fuel. Right? You're going to have lawnmowers and things like that. And I think Greg did it for us. Yeah, I saw something.
Mark, we're losing your mic.
Okay.
He says something about lawnmowers.
Well, they're going to have, they're going to have maintenance, uh, materi- uh, equipment. And, uh, I'm guessing they're going to, um, run on, um, on gasoline or fuel of some kind. Um, and I thought Greg did address that somewhere saying about the storage.
It's in P. They, I think they kind of, they're, they're sort of similar, they're separate sections, but they're.
Hey, page one eighty-four, and I agree. Um, both, both sections were addressed at the same time because they're, they're all, told them.
Yep.
Greg, are you familiar with the, um, Department of Environmental Protection? Wait, yeah, uh, State Fire Marshal's Office. Um, various standards for storage of the fuel.
Yes.
And so the maintenance building is, I, I assumed that that's where the storage of fuel would end up being.
Sure.
Are those standards, uh, hard to comply with? I mean, like,
It's amount of how much we aggregate in one space for fuel, um, threshold was two fifty. Um, and so if, if we need to store large amounts, we'd have a, have to get a permit for that. Um, but.
Soon they're just talking about gas cans.
Yeah, that's right. Yep, that's what it is.
Yeah, uh, uh, the ordinance says, uh, no flammable or explosive liquid solids or gases shall be stored in bulk above ground unless they are located at least seventy-five feet from any lot line or forty feet in the case of underground storage. So they're going to be in the, the maintenance facility, which is seventy-five feet from any property, right? Uh, the, the property line.
Yeah, you skipped the P again, but yes. And it's because the, the answer, the, the answer that's in the, of the language that's in our, our, um, finance and fact, fact sheet for O and P is the same.
Okay, yeah, I see, yeah.
Because it's essentially the same. I, I mean, look, this is not a type of project that it, it's, it feels like this is kind of more for our boatyard folks.
Brett.
Um, I, I don't, I'm not sure a gas can, well, first of all, I think that it's more that would be, it would be more than seventy-five feet. And I just don't think it implicates the D, these DEPs or.
Do we find this not applicable, Brett?
Well.
Or it is, and it's been met because.
I think O is probably not applicable. I think P is applicable, but met. Oh, well, actually it says bulk. I mean, probably not applicable for both. I don't, you're not storing, you don't have any big tanks, right? And you don't, you're not putting any oil tanks in Greg or anything like that. It's just all the, the gas, couple of gas cans for lawnmowers and why not, right? Yeah. I don't think that they're applicable.
Okay, a motion is.
Motion that, um, Article nine, uh,
Subsection. You go ahead.
I'm going to get a two for here. Subsection O and P are not applicable to this project.
I'll second the twofer.
Motion and second on the table that both O and P are not applicable for this project, but I would say that P is just because the source of gas, but I say it's met.
Well, it, it talks about bulk, right? I mean, I don't think this is bulk. I don't think a gas can, that's why I asked him if he's.
Oh, okay, bulk, yeah. What's bulk? Five gallons, twenty gallons? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, yeah, I think it's when you have a, a big tank.
A tank, yeah. Okay, I'm okay with that then. Okay, um, call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that's took care of O and P, three zero on both. Somehow I think Q's next.
Yeah, and somehow I think it's probably the same answer.
I'll make a relation, Shoreland, Brett, so this is, um, there's no abutting navigable water bodies. Um, so I'll make a motion that, uh, Q Shoreland relationship is not applicable because there are no abutting navigable water bodies.
I'll second.
Well, this is a second on the table to find that, uh, the Shoreland relationship, uh, condition has been met, uh, or is, is not applicable, sorry, not applicable. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's not applicable, three zero. Technical and financial capacity.
We've got a letter from the bank on one eighty-nine.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier in this whole process, yeah.
Yep.
Take a quick motion on that.
I'll take a, make a motion that, uh, the technical and financial capacity, um, condition has been met. Um, due to the letter from Matthias Savings Bank on page one eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion second on the table to find the technical financial capacity, uh, condition has been met for stated reason. All in favor, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero. Solid waste disposal.
So we've got a letter from Tim Gott. Is, uh, Beth still on? Refuse yourself, so.
You want to have Beth comment on this?
Yeah, right. We, we won't ask Beth to speak to this at all. Um, but, uh, they've got locations for the dumpsters, uh, shown on the plans, um, and the contract shown.
We'd also like to note on the Wilson that they included in the description of, um, thirty gallon, uh, trash bin canister.
Oh, right.
Um, on the side of each deck of the, the glamping sites. On page sixteen.
Yep. Take a quick motion here, guys.
I'll make a motion that, um, the solid waste disposal condition has been met, um, due to the waste disposal, uh, plans and the drawings and the conclusion of thirty gallon, uh, trash cans for each site.
Second.
Well, the second on the table, find the, uh, solid waste disposal condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero again. Historic and archaeological resources.
Um, so it looks like they looked at the comprehensive plan, um, list of, uh, archaeological sites, um, and the National Register of Historic Places.
And they also contact the historic preservation, main historic preservation, I thought.
Uh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, there's a letter from, uh, Kirk Mahoney.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that the, uh, condition for historic and archaeological resources has been met because no portion has been identified as containing historical archaeological resources. Per the main historic preservation commission, um, or the TruMont comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion second on the table to find that the historic and archaeological resources condition has been met for stated reason. Any discussion?
I'd probably say it's not applicable, but okay, either way.
Well, it had to be applicable because otherwise why would they go through the trouble and, and.
Well, it says if any portion.
No portion is identified, okay. Oh, good question, yeah.
Yeah. Aplicable. Do we change the motion?
I'm going to end your motion.
Awesome.
Well, did I move, didn't you second it, Mark, already?
I did, yes.
So I'm going to say no.
Great.
Lawson?
No.
Myself, no. Okay, want to make another motion?
I'll make a motion that the historic and archaeological resources, uh, condition has not, uh, is not applicable. Um, because no portion of the site has been identified as containing historic or, or historic or archaeological resources.
Second.
Motion second on the table to find the, uh, historic and archaeological, uh, research. Is not applicable for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three oh. Last one here, floodplain management.
Make a motion that, uh, Article nine subsection U floodplain management is not applicable as no portion of the project is located within a theme identified one hundred U floodplain.
Second.
Motion and second on the table to find the flood, floodplain management conditions been, is not applicable for stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's three zero. Well, we got through that. Now we've got to decide about how to get through the rest of this.
So, are you looking to us as applicant, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Well, since, um, our ordinance says that you, we have to do with mutual agreement with you.
So, so earlier tonight, it was, uh, suggested that March, excuse me, March one, November first might be available. Um, I will move another meeting that I have, uh, Monday, um, November first. If there's a time that would be convenient to the board, um, and, uh, extend, it will take time to develop, um, uh, the findings of fact and conclusions of law that's got to be, um, drafted, I think, to give the board, uh, the rest of this week. Uh, so that we come back one last time on Monday and just finalize, uh, would be helpful. So as was suggested earlier, uh, November first, uh, might be the next opportunity. And we, we'd like to ask the board if it might, um, entertain that.
That's Monday, huh?
Yes.
Um, board members, are you available then, or do you think an earlier date?
Um, I'm available then, um, you know, I could do it tomorrow as well. I try to, you know, Friday nights are kind of hopefully not as much work, but, but I, I can do it on Monday. I can do it.
Saturday morning, we could do Saturday morning.
So, so, um, we would entertain, uh, tomorrow night or Monday, uh, whichever the board, um, would, would, um, be able to gather and, and, and dress. Uh, I should be deferential to, um, Attorney O'Connell and, um, Mr. Dunbar, uh, because, um, this is, this is, you know, this hard work we're doing, but we want to get it through. And I, I actually looked at the land use ordinance standards. They're much fewer, uh, and they present much easier questions. All the big issues have been reviewed tonight, so, um, I think, I think you're going to get there with one more evening. So it could either be tomorrow night or Monday. We'll, we'll go either way.
I think Jesse, it's a harbor committee meeting tomorrow night, right?
For what?
The harbor committee meeting has been canceled tomorrow night.
Okay.
I have a conflict tomorrow evening.
Okay, but you could do Monday?
I can do Monday, yes.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yeah, I'm available, um, either evening, tomorrow or Monday.
We, we, we've ruled out, uh, tomorrow, so it's Monday or.
It's fine.
I'm doing fine.
And, uh, can we, you know, sort of reach out to Jeff and see if he's available?
Um, Jesse, what do you think?
Great. Uh, I mean, I, I, I think we could schedule it without asking Jeff if he's available. We know there's a horn that could, can make it, but it'd be nice if he can get out of the woods and find, find some wifi, um, to join.
So Jesse, you'll email him then?
Yes.
Okay, okay. We have to decide on the time. Six, six thirty? What, what's best for you guys?
I'm flexible. Um, six is good. Even five thirty or five, I mean, I, I feel like.
I started five, if we can start at five.
Like.
Five.
I don't know. It's quarter to ten and I'm fading.
I faded a long time ago, so, um, uh, does five o'clock work with, uh, Amy and, and Andy? Amy and and Andy and Diane? It does for you, Amy, okay.
Yes, it does. And and thank you for your hard work tonight. I know it. I know it is hard work, and it is late, and not a lot of brain cells are firing at this hour, so I do
No comment.
I did, I didn't want to, I didn't want to suggest that one final cumulative vote, according to your draft findings of fact from Jesse, should be done on the SPRO. And so if you could do that to to close out the findings on the SPRO, and then if it's at all possible, if we could do it at five thirty, I've got a Washington County community that I need to advise, and I could bump that meeting to four thirty, I think. And I could join you by five thirty if that could work. But I agree with Lawson and the board generally that starting earlier could be helpful, so five thirty we could do.
That works for me.
I like that. Everybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion to schedule a continuance of the finding of facts regarding Katy Wilderness Lodge.
Was there a vote that we needed to do on the SPRO? That
Yeah, but I figured, I figured.
There's a final cumulative vote on the SPRO that would be helpful to address tonight, if that's possible, because all all you're doing is 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 stating the final review as to the SPRO, and then we'll go to land use ordinance on Monday, if that's possible.
I guess I was just suggesting, Mark, that we do that before we continue, but
I was gonna do it the other way around. I don't think it really matters, as long as
You're the boss, I'll follow you.
I just figure we're talking about the meeting that's
I'll make a motion that we continue the findings of fact to Monday, November first, at five thirty by a zoom.
Second.
Okay, motion second on the table to schedule the meeting for then or continue some of the meeting until then, five thirty on Monday. All in favor, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Lawson, you want to make a motion?
Um, yeah, although I think I want to talk about it first. So now we're basically making a motion about the whole SPRO finding that it is, it's like all the conditions you've been either been met, met conditionally or not applicable. Is that the right thing? Mark?
Sounds right to me.
Great.
Maybe Jesse or Diane has something something else to say. Actually, it it it's, it's the vote could be approved or denied, I think. Is that correct, Jesse?
And so we're approving, I see, okay. So we're gonna approve each one of these one at a time. So we're gonna approve the SPRO.
The whole thing, yes.
The whole thing now.
Yes.
And then
Because we found all conditions have been met or not applicable. Some with conditions.
True.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, just point of order? I don't think all the conditions of approval have been, I I know that Andy did flash a number on the screen. And but before you say that they're met with conditions, they're there were, the the conditions need to be specified. And I know that I know that the one that we just discussed, number four, was 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 specified. But
I think we did that in each motion that we, individual motion. Isn't that correct, folks?
Yeah, I've got listed two two conditions
Yeah.
that we've established through our review. And and maybe I I can restate them. I don't know, what do you think, Mark? Should I restate them, or should we just say as previously previously stated?
Mark, can I jump in?
Please.
I believe Ms. Chow is referencing conditions one, two, and three on Andy's list.
Sure, right. We have not made those
You have not, right, you have not done yet.
Right. Well, that that's a good point, and that was a question I was gonna ask. I assume that where do we, would we make those? I don't think we found them in findings of fact.
You you could make them when you make a decision on whether or not you're approving the application.
Your whole application, that's what I assumed.
Right. I think it's premature to being saying that the SPRO is met if you're, unless you are prepared to go through every condition of approval. I also think Mr. Hamilton did mention earlier that he was going to be circling back to the maximum occupancy issue, and all of these standards that you would be approving tonight would be met without that determination being made. And and so unless you're prepared to talk about those specific conditions of approval, I don't think you're prepared to approve the SPRO standards as a whole. That should, there should be a a final approval or 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 denial at the end. But we haven't gotten through all of these conditions of approval.
Diane?
Let me just suggest that we we did tie back these conditions to the public hearing and to specific standards, and I'm happy to hear Wilson's additional condition regarding permanent marking of of the proper direction of of traffic flow. That's the only one I have that's not on this list of one through four, so that would be number five. And we're happy to speak to the limit on occupancy either if Jesse thinks it's part of the SPRO and it ties to the SPRO as to parking or traffic, which are two standards you've reviewed. Or we could, or or we could reserve it for the land use ordinance discussion, but we we had that in mind as well.
But we can also set conditions of final approval, correct?
Correct.
I don't think you're prepared to adopt conditions of final approval tonight unless you're
Nobody's suggesting that. Nobody's suggesting that. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear on that. Diane, what's your opinion here? Should we wait to vote on final approval of the site plan review ordinance?
Um, so I just want to point out that there is another additional review criteria form for the site plan review that was provided to the board, that second one that's addressing some other standards or not so much standards, but other things to make decisions on under the site plan review that was provided. So I think you need to go through that before you make that final motion on the site plan review, whether or not that's been met.
And there's no need to do that tonight, correct? We can do that Monday.
I would wait, yeah, wait and do it at the next meeting.
Just to be ready, Diane, what were those other standards? If you could just list them quick.
I was just copied out from the ordinance under section E permit application review criteria.
Thank you.
So there's no need to vote on this tonight, then. We've set a date for the hearing. We need to schedule also the November ninth meeting, our next regular meeting, I think, although we could do that Monday, but let's, let's do it now.
And should we go back to in person?
I think we should continue Zoom. I know there's a lot of stuff going on in the community that's not good regarding COVID.
Great, so I'll take your word for it. Then I'll make a motion to schedule our next or not our next, just schedule our planning board meeting for November ninth at six PM via Zoom.
Second, Brett? Okay, motion is second to schedule the next regular meeting of the planning board for November ninth, six PM via Zoom. All in favor? Actually, we should have brought Beth back on this. Beth, you can vote on this. Brett?
Yes.
I don't think Beth's here anymore.
Lawson?
Yes.
But she gave up, huh? Okay, Beth, you're not here, sorry. I'd say yes with me, that's three zero. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second to adjourn. Brett, you in favor?
Yes.
Lawson?
With enthusiasm.
Yes, with me too, it's three zero. Okay, thanks, folks, for hanging with us as long.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.